Welcome to the January 22, 2013 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Weaver.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to America, to the Republic, forward, next, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the invocation. Yesterday, our nation witnessed the inauguration ceremony of President Barack Obama. Elected to serve a second term, the President took the oath of office on the same day that we honor the memory and work of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Inauguration is one of the most important rituals of our political process because, as President Kennedy remarked in his inaugural address, quote, "We observe not a victory of party, but a celebration of freedom." We observe the peaceful transition of the continuation of another term of those whom the people have selected to wield the power of that important office. Our nation thrives because we, as Americans, understand how to debate and how to come together once that debate is over for our common good. So today, let us pray that we continue to be good neighbors, good friends, and remember that the essence of being an American is not only the freedom to debate one another and challenge each other's opinions, but that we are able to come together at the conclusion of each debate as one nation. We pray for the President and his family and for the monumental task that lies before him to lead our country and serve us well, as well as all the men and women in our armed services who continue to serve our great nation. We pray for their safety and for their swift return home from serving abroad. We pray for all this and, above all, for peace tonight and always. Amen.
Mr. Clark, may we have your report?
Agenda for the January 22, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 17, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Under 3A is Presentation and Appointments. 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of January 29, 2013.
Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for January 29, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, to commence at 3:00 PM, we do have a meeting of the Glendale Successor Agency, and it'll be Director of Community Development. This is regarding recognized obligation payment schedule for July to December of 2013. That evening, for the City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Director of Community Services and Parks. This is regarding Civic Auditorium Roof Replacement Project. The Chief of Police, Acceptance of Funding via United States Department of Homeland Security 2012 State Homeland Security Grant Program. Director of Public Works and the Fire Chief, this is purchase of proprietary Pierce parts and services for the maintenance of city-owned Pierce fire apparatus. Director of Public Works and Fire Chief, this is regarding the disposition of two 2001 Crown Victoria vehicles. Director of Public Works and Fire Chief, disposition of one 1980 Sea Grave Ladder Truck. Director of Public Works, this is a purchase of Ford parts and services for the maintenance of city-owned Ford vehicles. We have adoption of ordinances, ordinance authorizing issuance of Glendale Water and Power Electric Revenue Bonds 2013, and possibly an urgency ordinance that would be enacting a moratorium on the possession or sale of firearms. Under Action Items, we have three items. Director of Information Services, this is software and services for development of a new city website, implementation of a web connect system, site migration of existing website pages, and ongoing maintenance and support. Director of Community Development, this is destruction of nonessential city records. And lastly, the Fire Chief, this is regarding the one-year review of the BLS ambulance program. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Next, at 3B is Nomination Assignment for Resigned Audit Committee Member Edward Azari. This was the appointment of Councilmember Manukian.
I will hold off on the appointment at this point. Thank you.
3C is the Mayor's Commendation to the Photographers Society of Southern California.
Okay, if the recipients will come to the lectern. I'll read the Mayor's Commendation, and before I do, thank you very much for this beautiful book and calendar and all of the other materials that you presented. All of the council members and the staff have received them. The Mayor's Commendation reads as follows. "To the Photographers Society of Southern California, On behalf of the City of Glendale, I would like to express my sincere appreciation to the Photographers Society of Los Angeles for showcasing their 2012 photo exhibition entitled 'Riches of the Land: City of Angels,' and it was held at the Glendale Public Library. I salute your commitment to providing a quality arts experience to the community, and I'm pleased to welcome you to Glendale. Signed, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale." Very much.
I would like first to thank Mayor Frank Quintero and the Glendale City Council members for giving me a chance to introduce our organizations. My name is Alex Kim, and I'm a president of the Photographers Society of Southern California. PSSC is a nonprofit organization whose goal is to promote the development of photography and provide the public with charitable service for the benefit of our local community through the photography. We have hosted an annual photography exhibition in the Korean Cultural Center of Los Angeles for the last seven years, as well as an international photography exhibition featuring the work of the photographers from United States, Korea, Japan, and China. As a community service, we have partnered with the Korean Consulate General of Los Angeles and take a portrait of Korean war veterans, and every year, we provide a portrait at no cost for senior citizens and the people with disabilities. In the recognition of our service, we received the President's Volunteer Service Award from the President Barack Obama in 2011. We are thrilled to have opportunity to host an exhibition at the Glendale Central Library through your help, even though we will hold a small exhibition this year. It is my hope that we grow the size every year and that through our presence, we can build a bridge of the understanding, the connect the Korean community and the citizens of Glendale. I dream that one day we'll be holding exhibition for the focus on the glow of the city of Glendale itself. Once again, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, and everyone else who made this exhibition possible, I send my deepest appreciation to your beautiful city of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And thank you for the beautiful books and calendar.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments, Ms. Friedman?
Sure. Saturday night was an amazing night for the Alex Theater. Art Truor Sandoval and his big band performed a benefit for Glendale Arts and for the Glendale Educational Fund. I think they came very close to selling out the Alex Theater, which is not easy to do because it's a very big theater. And it was a great performance. It was a great fundraiser for these two wonderful groups, and I want to congratulate everyone that was involved. I also attended last week a ribbon-cutting for a new restaurant that everyone should go out and try called 9021 Pho, which is a Pho Vietnamese restaurant that's open in the Glendale Galleria. It's a beautiful restaurant, a beautiful space, owned by local people, and I wish them well. We had a little bit of the food, and it was fabulous, so please go and support them. Thank you very much.
Comments? Okay, any comments from the staff? Next, please.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Items, including the minutes of following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Move the Consent Calendar at five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
At six is Oral Communications, as listed on our agenda, but as is the practice of this council, we reserve the first portion of oral communications to three-minute community-wide event announcements, and we'll revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Have one card, Leon Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Meyer. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library. And we present programs throughout the year, and we have three programs coming up in February and January. January 23, The Great Crisiana Valley Flood by Art Coburn, who is a longtime resident of La Crisiana Montrose and so forth. And this is a great program. You'll all want to come and see it. It's tomorrow night, so I'm giving you a heads-up. Parking is validated for three hours. We welcome you coming to the library and visiting the library and joining the Friends if you feel inclined. Then the next program after that, in connection with the Montrose Centennial, is February 20. We're going to have Robert Newcomb talk about his book, about the author of Montrose: Images of America. And Robert Newcomb is still alive, longtime resident of Montrose, Crisiana Valley, and both Robert Newcomb have done a lot of things for the, and Art Coburn have done a lot of things, extracurricular things in teaching and communication, I mean dedication to the community for many, many years. So feel free to come Wednesday, February 20, to see Robert Newcomb, Images of America, of Montrose, and Art Coburn, The Great Crisiana Valley Flood, and that's tomorrow night. And sorry, we're not able to give you more events, notice of that. And apparently, words got out on our January 30 event, The Beer Chicks. And there's not going to be any beer served at the library, but this is an event at the library, Central Library. Meet the Beer Chicks, who are known nationally. They've written a book called The Naked Pint, so it's a light program. And I know tonight is not the time to make light of anything, but a lot of people will come and enjoy that a few weeks from now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's the final card. Next, please.
Under 7A, under Adoption of Ordinances, is ordinance restricting the use of plastic carryout bags and imposing a 10-cent charge on recyclable paper bags introduced on January 15, 2013 by Councilmember Weaver.
Okay, I'll move 7A with the thought that people better carry some dimes around and tell the new message.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have three speaker cards. Jay Rando, followed by Mona Montgomery.
Mayor Quintero, Glendale City Council, nice to see you all tonight. I'd like to speak about our soon-to-be ordinance that we're going to be.
Two minutes, Mr. Rando.
Oh, thank you. That we're going to be voting on, that you guys need to vote on. I know it's following the county ordinance, and that's probably a very good thing. However, there are a couple of things that we should look at. The bags that we're thinking of doing, the reusable bags, are basically called fecal pesticide bags by three or four different university studies, because people use these bags, they go to the store, but they don't wash them properly every time they get done. As far as the plastic bags, I have to agree. That's probably a good thing that we get rid of them. But tonight, I brought a really cool magic trick for this, okay? You guys like magic? It's a really cool trick. This right here, looks like an ordinary, everyday plastic bag, right? Wouldn't you probably agree? I could give it to somebody. Here, Artie. It was like an actual, real plastic bag. Now watch this carefully. Keep watching, keep watching. There it is. This is a cornstarch bag. In six to eight weeks, it becomes water and fixed carbon dioxide in the soil if you go ahead and put it in a landfill, or water and fixed carbon anywhere else it's placed. What we should do as Glendale here, we should go ahead and add an addendum that this bag can be given away free by the grocers if they so desire to buy this particular bag for the convenience of their customers. It does two things. It helps the environment, and it is truly a green environmental impact. The bags that are made right now, that we are going to be using, those that are recyclable, although they appear to be a green bag, they actually cost a lot more energy to go ahead and produce than the cornstarch bag. And what's cool is the cornstarch bag place also will be able to give you a nice thing of those peanuts, those kind of peanuts. You guys ever get anything with those peanuts in your shipping containers? They look like they're styrofoam, where they now make them out of cornstarch. Put water on them, they disappear. So I think in Glendale, we need to maybe think about adding that to our ordinances. Thank you.
Mona Montgomery, followed by Harvey Pearson.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mona Montgomery, and I'm here to urge you not to make it illegal for people to use plastic bags, because that's not the way to fix the problem. The way to fix the problem is to enforce the laws you already have in place against littering and charge money every time you catch somebody throwing a plastic bag away, which is what is causing all the trouble. People are littering with their plastic bags. If you charged $50 or more for every time you caught somebody littering, you'd make some real money, instead of just creating a burden on the people by saying that you have to completely change what the free enterprise system has created, which is a wonderful way for people to get their groceries in these lightweight bags. That guy's bag is perfect and a perfect free enterprise solution, which should be courted, but not forced on the people. You're using tyrannical methods to achieve goals that the people have stated clearly they did not want. You put out questionnaires and asked the people how they felt about outlawing plastic bags. They said, "We don't want you to outlaw plastic bags." So you said, "Well, I guess we're just going to have to force them to do it." You are not well enough schooled in the American values to understand that your job is to lead the people in the way they want to be led, not in the way you choose to lead them. And we have chosen the free enterprise system because Americans believe that capitalism, which is where peer-to-peer people make deals with each other to their mutual benefit, is the way to decide and figure out what is best for the society. These plastic bags have been a wonderful solution. They're very lightweight. They aren't single-use bags. That's a misnomer. We had a picture here where you were claiming that 95% of our garbage was plastic bags. That was a lie. You showed a picture of 95% of the garbage being enclosed in plastic bags. Thank you.
Harvey Pearson. Hey, listen. Listen, for those of you who aren't from Glendale, we don't do applause and cat calls and all that. Last week, we had a very good session. Everyone stated their opinions, so when people come to the podium, let them speak, and that's as far as it's going to go. Harvey Pearson.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, Harvey Pearson, Los Feliz, Glendale Denison. I agree with the lady pretty much that just spoke, and it would be nice, the gentleman that was speaking before, if they could have hemp bags or some kind of plastic bag that was biodegradable. If they've got them, why not switch to those? And also, the cans and bottles, people bring them in, they go to the recycling centers in Glendale. I've seen them. They just go through the trashcans, they get a little money for them. How about taking the 10-cent charge for the paper bags, take a nickel of those and offer people a nickel to bring in for every, it's not too filthy, plastic bag, in that way, because people are throwing them evidently in the trash instead of bringing them into a recycling center. They don't have any motivation to bring them in. Why not throw it in the trash, you know? So then, in Los Angeles, as you know, they're doing the same thing about now, and they had an environmental resources, LTD, that came out here and did a study, and they concluded that the component of litter that, in Los Angeles trash anyway, that's composed of plastic bags, is greatly exaggerated, like maybe less than 1%. I know, I don't see all these bags floating up all over the street and everything. I've been down at the beach. I don't see them on the beach. And I've even seen the picture of the Great Pacific Garbage Patch in People Magazine, and you see these huge items, and it is a big, whole lot of trash, but where exactly are the little, single-use plastic bags? I don't know. I see these great big things. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, we had an extensive discussion when the item came before us, but any other comments?
Just one. Wouldn't it be nice if we could catch all the people dropping off the plastic bags? Unfortunately, we can't even stop all the speeders driving around like maniacs in this town, so I don't think we'll be able to pick up the people. We did extensive research on this. Other cities have done it. We're not alone. Yes, my mic is on.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was very adamantly against eliminating the plastic bags, the single use. I use them over and over again. Well, actually, I use them just once. I take them home, and I put my trash and my other things in them. But I want you to know that I promised to keep an open mind on this, and I have read much from some of the residents. Alec Bartersoo comes to mind. Mr. Rondo's idea of the degradable bag, staff looked at that, and apparently, it does not degrade completely. There are still coin-sized fragments that remain when they degrade. That's my information. I've been, in a pinch, I was given a courtesy bag by my colleague, Ms. Friedman, one evening when I was looking for a plastic bag, and I've used that a few times. And although it may be a temporary inconvenience, I think we can all figure out how to bring a reusable bag, a canvas tote, or a plastic fiber tote, put it in the back of our car, and go and shop, and be sure you wash it a few times. I know that is an issue. I've read the literature as well, so I plan on tossing mine in the laundry every few cycles. I'm not going to wash it alone. I'm not going to spend 10 gallons just washing one bag. I don't think the issue of the freighters from China burning the bunker oil, I think they call it, as they idle in the ports, is a significant issue on this. So all in all, I kept an open mind, and you convinced me, so I will support this item.
What were the numbers at the local landfill? How many estimated plastic bags?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's estimated that in Glendale, 116 million bags are issued each year, just in Glendale. Six billion countywide.
Right, 116 million in Glendale and about 6 billion countywide.
Correct.
Lot of plastic bags. Any other comments?
I will also support the ordinance. I think it's time that we act on this issue. As an individual who frequents the beaches, I've seen firsthand, as it relates to the litter that is created, not at the beach, but in the water. So I'm ready to support this ordinance as well.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Next at B is an ordinance for adoption and mending the zone map for property located 313315 West California Avenue, introduced on January 15, 2013. Weaver, by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor, I'll move 7B.
Second. Any discussion?
There, second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Under Action Items, at 8A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding proposed ordinance authorizing issuance of Glendale Water and Power Electric Revenue Bonds 2013 Refunding Series.
Yes, sir. This is a much anticipated and very welcomed opportunity for Glendale Water and Power. We have the opportunity at this point to take advantage of historically low interest rates to refund an initial offering bond issuance in 2003 of 31.64 million. At this point, we are asking that the council authorize 23.69 million in tax-exempt revenue bonds for the electric utility. What this effectively does for us is take that interest rate from 4.94% to an estimated 3.51%. This will allow us to maintain the current amortization of the remaining 19 years, but in doing so, drop the payments significantly, such that we will be able to realize $2.8 million in savings that will accrue back to the utility and ultimately to its rate payers. So unless the council has questions about this item, that has been something that we've been discussing and contemplating for some time, Mr. Zern and Mr. Elliott can answer those questions for you.
Okay, I have one speaker card. Herbert Milano. He may be downstairs.
While we're waiting for him to come up, if I can ask a question. Are there any prepayment penalties involved with cashing or refunding, refinancing?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was a 10-year call option on this. We're now at the 10-year point, which allows us to refund them, so there is no pre-penalty at this point.
And we don't extend the amortization period?
No.
We keep to our original schedule?
It's the original timeline, remaining 19 years.
Okay, Herbert Milano to speak on item 8A. The clerk is going to go down and see if he's downstairs. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Weaver.
I'll introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
All right, the ordinance has been introduced and will be discussed next week. Next, please.
3A B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding authorization to use funds from GWP's cash reserves for the water utility to fund capital projects. At B1 is a resolution appropriating $4,311,800 to fund the capital project.
Mr. Ochoa.
Equally interesting and invigorating item, because, as you know, the council recently authorized the issuance of water revenue bonds to deal with the distribution system needs, and in true Glendale fashion, we are taking the initiative to make sure that we get that money out on the street and not only improve service, but put folks back to work as we do so. It is a one-city WPA, as we like to boast. We have a list of specific projects that encompass the $7.8 million in work that will be done over the coming, or over the current fiscal year. I defer to Mr. Zern in terms of what the specifics of those respective projects are.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, this is the portion of the bond proceeds that we're recommending approval for tonight to get us through the rest of this fiscal year. The remaining proceeds will be budgeted and programmed during the regular budget and capital improvement project review period. As we had stated during the discussions on the bonds, we have a lot of emphasis on the distribution system. So we're actually adding, in this particular case, about $4.3 million to what was previously budgeted in our capital program. Again, we've got our Adams Hill Distribution System Upgrade, we have Kenyatta, and a couple of other streets where we're going to be doing some relining. We wanted to come back and redo the two wells at Glorieta. If you recall, I came before you with those. We rejected the bids because they were too high. We've done some rework on that, but those two wells, if we can get those updated and maintained, we can produce a lot more local water, which, as you know, is considerably less expensive than MWD water. And we also have our SCADA system, which is our wireless communication system with all of our facilities. We have a very robust system on the electric side.
This is something we set aside last year when we zeroed out our capital budget, for the most part, and it's something that we want to, uh, to go after right away. So that, that encompasses the, the crux of what we're asking for this year, and again, we'll have a full capital program proposed to you during the budget process for next year, and, and again, the following year as well. But the emphasis will be, as, as we've talked about, a lot on the distribution system, not as much on storage, we really wanna get out there and, and upgrade our distribution and , and valving system.
Jerry?
Mr. Zern, let me just ask you a couple of questions, uh, regarding the neighborhoods and areas of the city that would benefit from each and every one of these. The Glorieta Wells Rehab provides water to the entire city?
Correct.
Okay. The, uh, the SCADA system?
Entire city.
Entire city. The chloramination project?
That is a, one particular, um, storage facility, it conceivably serves a very large portion of the city. This is our, our conversion from the straight chlorinization system into this advanced, um, sanitizing.
Okay, to keep the water safe, pure, and free of pathogens and all that?
Doesn't require as much chlorine usage.
Okay. The San Luis Rey tank demolition, that's the big tank sitting above the woodlands, right?
Correct, and this is a very small amount of money, those tanks are obsolete, they've been replaced, so they're going to be, be removed, and this is just, actually, if you recall, I, I came earlier, we have a firm that's, that's taking those tanks out for us for no charge whatsoever. This small amount of money lets us put the area back to, to the way it was.
Adams Hill, you said, replacing the main, uh, the Kenyatta Boulevard cleaning and lining, improving flow and quality of the water?
Correct.
The Ben Lohman is in the northwest, uh, region?
That's a water main replacement, correct?
Kenneth, of course, in the Kenneth, uh, northwest area.
That's, that is.
Uh, the recycled water?
That's actually a joint project with the city of LA, so Betty Davis Park will, will receive that water, but it also gets us, uh, with, with the potential for a two-way exchange there on our, on our reclaim system.
Okay. Um, I'm happy we're doing these projects, I think it's important to maintain a fresh water supply to the city, reliable flow, uh, and minimum, uh, disruption, even though there is a, uh, multimillion dollar cost to this, uh, I am, I think one of our jobs as council is to make sure that we, uh, continue to provide the utility services to the residents, so I'm happy with this, and the prices seem reasonable to me, from what we've seen. Thank you.
Mr. Menuchaian?
I, I wanna ask a question regarding the finances, is this, uh, the item that we discussed during the budget deliberations regarding borrowing from one fund to the other? Is this, are we borrowing from the electric fund? The 5 million dollars that we discussed during the budget, uh, budget deliberations?
The, the portion that we're appropriating tonight, that 4.3, is coming from the water bond revenues, the proceeds.
Not, not the electric fund?
Not the?
Because it states GWP's cash reserves, so I don't know whether it's electric or water.
During the course of operations of the year, we utilize cash from the electric side, because as you know, the water side doesn't have cash, it's running a deficit. So, in the course of operations, that is getting mixed together, um, I don't know if that's answering your question or not?
No, it's not, what is getting mixed together?
The, the cash of the utility. The water utility has a negative cash balance currently.
Okay.
Um, the, we have set the water utility up on the trajectory through the regular rate increases, uh, growth, and the rate restructuring, and the organic growth of the market, so that by 2016, 2016, 17, uh, we are back positive and, and tracking towards a healthy fund balance. Until that time, as a matter of operations, we would be using a GWP, uh, or GWP electric, uh, cash resources to operate the utility, and we, we account for that in our cap reach year. The capital improvements that you're seeing tonight are capital improvements that are being funded by, the latter part, the 4.3 million, are being funded exclusively from the proceeds, uh, from the bond issue that was recently sold.
Not from the electric fund.
To the extent, well, that, that operations are funded by the electric fund during the course of the year, yes.
Well, that, that.
Just a point of clarification, the bond, the issue of the bonds are for the sole purpose for capital improvement, can only be spent on capital improvement, so.
Water side of the utility.
Right, so their, their pledged water, um, the, uh, water revenue is pledged for their repayment, so, um, the items listed out in the official statement, um, for, uh, the debt that we issued can only be spent on the projects or related.
Right.
Capital-type projects for water.
So these, this 4.3 million dollars comes from the bond proceeds?
Correct.
Not necessarily a reserve of electric or water?
Correct.
Water, we don't have reserve, but the electric. So it's coming from the bond proceeds, not, not for any other, from any other reserve fund?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Move 8B1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchaian?
I can leave the card to you.
No, you put in a card at 8A, we called your name twice.
There was a card for 8A, but not.
I think I'll downstairs.
Mr. Milano, someone was sent out into the hallway seeking you, and they could not find you, I think the council waited adequately for you to make your way up here.
We're in the middle of a roll call, Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes, next.
8C is City Attorney regarding discussion of gun show on city property. C1 is motion directing the Director of Community Services and Parks to exercise the city's option in civic auditorium rental agreements, facility permits of termination for convenience under paragraph number 46 of facility permits with Mr. Steve Fiesen for the gun show scheduled this year and following years. At 2 is an urgency ordinance for introduction enacting a moratorium of the possession or sale of firearms and ammunition on city-owned property. At 3 is a motion directing City Attorney to conduct further research on options for an ordinance prohibiting possession and/or sale of firearms on city-owned property.
Okay, so for those of you who will have turned in their cards, and anyone else who wants to speak, make sure you, uh, write your name and address and so forth, um, how many do we have?
Fifty-four.
All right, so far, we have 54 cards, there'll probably be more being turned in later. So it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long night. So what we'll do is, we're gonna listen to the City Attorney, then the City Council will ask questions, uh, et cetera, and then we'll turn to the speaker cards after the final speaker has their say, then we'll close the oral communication portion, and we will then, uh, deliberate. And if we leave the podium at any time, there's a television in the back where we're watching the proceedings, so we've been at this all day, so sometimes we go back to get more water, whatever we, uh, we decide to do, but in fact, we have, uh, we have the television back there and watch the proceedings. Mr. Garcia?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, the, uh, Glendale Civic Auditorium leases, uh, that facility, uh, three, on average, three times a year, uh, for the Glendale Gun Show. Uh, Councilmember Menuchaian requested a report on, uh, the gun shows, uh, in Glendale, and partic- and for options to be discussed by the City Council. Uh, the regulation of firearms and ammunitions are regulated, uh, by federal and state legislation, uh, such as background checks, and those background checks are, uh, required for gun shows as well. Uh, the regulations of firearm and ammunition has been subject to extensive litigation in both federal and state courts. Um, in 2008, the US Supreme Court ruled, uh, that the Second Amendment does, uh, guarantee the right of an individual to bear arms in, in his home for self, his or her home for self-defense. Um, since then, uh, the state of, of the legal situation of litigation i- is in flux, um, but, uh, it's, the standard of review for, uh, looking at local regulations, um, is still being fleshed out in this litigation. However, um, it, it is my opinion that as long as local regulations do not substantially burden or unfairly burden the right of individuals to, to have arms for, for self-defense in their home, um, those regulations are gonna be upheld by the courts. Um, so what has been presented to you are a series of options, um, that are before you, uh, Mr. Kasakian read them out, but let me discuss each of them. Um, first and foremost, there is a termination, 30-day termination, uh, notice provision in each of our rental agreements with the Glendale Gun Show, and so one option that the council has is to, uh, direct the Director of Community Services and Parks to terminate those contracts with the 30-day notice. I would note that even though those, those provisions do allow 30-day termination, it could subject the city to, uh, potential litigation on constitutional grounds, and so the council may want to consider, uh, additional regulatory measures, uh, that might prohibit, uh, the possession and/or sale of firearms on city-owned property. Uh, and there's a couple, a couple mechanisms to do this, or a couple of, of options that are before you. Um, first, uh, I would note that there, the first, or the next gun show, uh, that is scheduled for the civic is on March 1st through the 3rd of this year, and so the council does have the authority to adopt an interim urgency ordinance, uh, prohibiting the possession and/or sale of firearms or ammunition on city-owned property, uh, with certain exceptions, and the council would have the authority to introduce that tonight and, um, adopt it next week on an urgency basis, uh, in addition to, uh, directing the director to cancel, uh, provide the 30-day notice, uh, required in, under the rental agreements. In addition, or in combination with some of the options that I, I just discussed, the council could also, uh, direct our office to prepare a, uh, comprehensive ordinance, uh, regulating or prohibiting, uh, the possession and/or sale of firearms on city property with exceptions, um, and we would do so, providing, uh, appropriate factual findings and evidentiary basis to do so. Um, uh, with respect to, uh, let me address the moratorium briefly, the moratorium, if it is adopted next week, would be valid for 45 days, at which time the council would either have to extend it, uh, or let it expire, or adopt a, a more comprehensive ordinance. Um, so those are the particular options, again, the council, at the council, uh, if there's a desire upon the council to, uh, take action, to, uh, can't, direct the director to cancel the show set for March 1st, our recommendation is to authorize him to do that as well as adopt the, the moratorium ordinance, so you have both the, the Executive Act of canceling the contract and legislation on the books prohibiting the possession and sale of firearms on city-owned property. Uh, if the council is less concerned about the March 1st, uh, upcoming show, then the council could direct us to prepare that ordinance and bring it back. We would be prepared to bring that ordinance back to you as early as four weeks from tonight's meeting, um, and it's up to the council and the mayor to decide exactly what point to bring that, that ordinance back before you. So those, those are the options available to you, obviously, the other option, obviously, after you hear public comment, is to not take any, any action, and not, not take any of the, not direct us on any of these options, and allow the gun shows to go forward. So with that, I, I open a question from the council.
Mr. Menuchaian?
The contracts we have with the gun show operator?
Correct.
I wanna reemphasize what you mentioned regarding, uh, the cancellation of that contract, could you repeat that? Did, by the gun show operator signing that contract, do they, uh, accept the fact that the city can cancel the contract?
Uh, Councilmember Menuchaian, in my view, yes, that they, they accept that, uh, they, they agreed to that.
By signing the contract?
By signing that.
Did they cross out that section that says you can cancel the contract?
No, sir, they did not, and again, that does give you the authority to cancel it. As I mentioned, I ju- as the attorney, I always wanna make sure that we have both executive authority to do something as well as legislative, uh, or, or regulation in place, banning that.
I understand, but I, I just wanna make clear that there was a contract, and the operator knowingly signed the contract, uh, the way it was presented to them, for, for years, they have signed the contract, similar to this.
The law presumes that when you sign a contract, you're aware of every single provision in that contract, yes, sir?
Thank you.
And how long has that show been in Glendale?
Uh, I'm not, it's been quite a while, it was Mr. Durant. I'd have to ask Mr. Durant, who might know?
I just wanna answer, I don't want a whole report, how many years has it been in Glendale?
It's been a very long time, there's been approximately 70 gun shows at an average of three or four per year.
Okay, at any time during that period of time, has the city unilaterally canceled the contract?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. There are a lot of cards here, um, Mr. Mayor, um, and I'm gonna carefully listen to what everyone has to say, however, I would like, uh, from my colleagues, uh, so I can, I can apply the comments from the public, either for or against, uh, why this, uh, proposal to ban the gun show has been put before us. There are reasons, I'd like to hear those reasons, and then I'd like to mesh that with, with what I hear from the public, so, anyone who would like to give me those reasons, um, I'm, I'm willing to listen to the reasons, and I'm willing to listen to arguments and the public, and.
I think we should hear from the public first.
Can you give us? I have a question for Mr. Garcia, so, just to be clear, because I have received a lot of emails, and I've read them all, and some of the emails, um, uh, seem to think that we, tonight, are considering banning gun shows in Glendale, and I just wanna be very clear that that's not what's in front of us, that it's banning, it's a possibility of banning gun shows of the civic, there's an option of banning gun shows on city property, but none of that would prohibit this gun show from moving to a private venue in Glendale, correct? If they wanted to go to the Hilton, if they wanted to go to any large space, they could still do that, correct?
That's correct. Uh, Councilmember Friedman, the focus of discussion is the possession and sale of firearms on city-owned property.
Right, and.
Not on.
And under our current regulations, that gun co- show could locate in a private location within Glendale, correct?
As long as they could apply with other state and federal laws governing, governing the sale of guns, yes.
Okay, I just wanna be sure that we're all talking about the same thing here.
To that end, I would think from the discussion council has had, and to the discussion that we've received from members of the public, this is less an issue of safety, and less, indeed, of a gun issue, and something more of a public policy issue. This show occurs, and has occurred, on city-owned property. The decision before you is not whether or not, uh, guns can be owned or sold in the city, as you point out, or in the state, or in the nation, the issue before you is in terms of the use of public property, not as a regulator of people's rights, but as a lessor of public property, is that an appropriate use? That's really as far as this discussion has to go.
And just so that people who are here who maybe don't live in Glendale, just so that they understand, can somebody tell us how many locations in Glendale, besides the gun show, people can purchase guns? I don't even know, I, I know there are several, but I, I'm curious as to how many.
I understand there are three retail locations where persons can purchase them in their other wholesale op, just in, in the city limits itself.
Well, there's three dedicated gun shops, but there aren't, there also sporting goods stores that sell guns, and pawn shops?
Correct, uh, Big Five, and, uh.
What about, so we have Big Five, and what, how many pawn shops, does anybody know?
I don't know that number.
I know the one right next to City Hall sells guns, I've seen them in there. Just in case anybody's shopping, they're right next door, probably not open now. Okay, thank you.
And let me just add to Mr. Ochoa's comment, even though public safety need not be the focus, um, it's certainly within the council's purview to consider that as one of the basis for adopting a regulatory measure tonight, or, you know, either the interim or when we come back at a later time.
But what you will hear tonight is that the gun show is not a, a matter of, of safety, it's, it's a symbol, and I would submit to you that symbols are important, and the council is within its rights to make a decision based on that policy, and recognizing that, that the overarching need of public safety, uh, and priority of public safety is something that you all can and should take into account.
Okay, well, if you can't hear, ma'am, there's a seat right here in the front of the, uh, of the hall, so you can move forward if you want, there's one seat, there's another one there, a second seat. Okay, I'm gonna read three, uh, cards in a row, since there may be people downstairs, so give them time to, when your name is called, uh, be prepared to speak, I'll allow the normal two minutes per speaker, and so we'll get started, uh, as I mentioned, we're up to 54 cards, anyone else that wants to speak, uh, please fill out a, uh, please fill out a card and bring it to the, uh, city clerk. Dr. Vahe Perumian, followed by Jay Rando, followed by Don Donaham.
Time myself, you, two minutes, right?
Yeah, and there'll be a timer there at the, uh.
Oh, fantastic.
There'll be a timer at the lectern for you.
Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, my name is Vahe Perumian, I'm a 34-year resident of Glendale, father to two children, and a member of the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees. Let me stress here that my views tonight don't represent the official stance of the college or the board of trustees, I'm speaking as a concerned ci- uh, citizen and a concerned board member. You may be familiar with the Gun Freeze School Zone Act of 1995, which prohibits the possession or discharging of a firearm within 1,000 feet of an elementary or secondary school. Item F of the whereas section of this act reads, whereas the occurrence of violent crime in school zones has resulted in a decline in the quality of education of our country. Let me stress that, possession of guns results in a decline in the quality of education in our country. The civic auditorium is located across the street from Glendale College, where over 20,000 students take classes annually, and on any given day, we have more students at the college than all of the GUST. the college than all of the GUST high schools combined. There are, in fact, hundreds of high school students who concurrently take classes at GCC, and we also have a child development center where pre-kindergartners attend. The gun show is primarily a venue for the sale of cheap ammunition. In fact, we've been told that an entire container full of ammo is sold on each day of the show. We're playing with fire, ladies and gentlemen. We're selling ammo across the street from Community College and doing so less than 300 feet away from College View School and less than half a mile away from Verdugo Woodlands Elementary. The contract for the gun show allows it to begin at 1:00 PM on Friday, when thousands of our kids are in school in close proximity to the show. On Saturdays, when the show officially begins and hundreds descend on the Civic, we have over 1,000 students on campus, some of whom actually park at the Civic Auditorium. No, this is worse than playing with fire, and it is, in fact, a safety issue. It's akin to placing a powder keg next to a bonfire and then being surprised when there's an explosion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be in two seconds.
No, 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 sorry.
There was a community college shooting today, and we need to keep that in mind in our thoughts today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jay Rando, followed by Don Dunham, followed by Lou Fried.
Hello, council members, my name is Jay Rando. I'm here to speak on guns and drugs. Does prohibition ever work? Let's say we have a life-saving drug that is used 6,774 times a day, every day of the year, yet because of the abuse of this drug, 24 people die. That leaves 6,750 people, lives that have been saved by this drug. Do we outlaw it? What I've just given you in those statistics is the number of times that a gun is used to deter a rape, robbery, or violent deadly assault. Now, this number I've given you is only half of what it should be, because the FBI says it should be doubled, but let's look at the low numbers that I just gave you. That means that every year, 2.5 million lives are saved annually. 8,583 people last year were killed by a firearm. But that means that if you look at that statistics, more guns are saving lives than hurting people. Violent crime, including violent crime using guns, has dropped massively over the past 20 years. In fact, the greatest decline occurred after the assault weapons ban sunsetted. You guys have an ordinance here that says there were 6,503 murders in 2003. Last year, of those, 13,000, it says, were due to guns. Last year, it was 8,500. Once again, more guns are leading to less killings. Schools are safer than they have ever been. The number of students victimized has dropped from 53 to 14. Secondly, urban crime rates are down. They're three and a half times less than England, but they're due to many small factors, but one large one why they continue up, Dianne Feinstein. You and other politicians, they're lazy. In fact, one group, the Mayor Against Gun Violence, is one of the laziest. Why do I say this? You can get all the information you need from the FBI.gov website and the Census.gov website, and you can see exactly to the exact neighborhood where these problems are. Is Mayor Quintero's phone burning up from these mayors? No, they're not. They just don't care. They are lazy. In the end, the whole purpose of the Constitution is to insulate personal freedom from the lust for power of those in government and the passions of the people who sent them there. Thank you.
Don Dunham, Lou Fried, Michael Collins.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Don Dunham. To prevent the ability to purchase and acquire an object is to prevent the right, as a matter of reality and fact, to possess it. The right to possess a firearm is a constitutional right. To limit the options down to a couple of stores, I believe Calvin Friedman said there's two or three places, two stores, to limit the right and the option down to one or two places to purchase it is to limit the right to possess the item. So what is the reason for the ban? I've never really heard a good reason. Is to prevent me from shopping, the ban on the gun show? Is to prevent me from shopping there? I shop there. I've never committed a crime with a gun, and it's very unlikely that now, at this age, buying a gun through a federally licensed firearms dealer at the Glendale Gun Show, which is the only way you can buy a gun there, is all of a sudden going to make me start committing a crime with a gun? So if it's not going to be me, we're trying to prevent someone else from doing the same thing? Well, so the logic must be that someone who is going to merely possess an inanimate object is now going to commit an act that they otherwise would not commit. Really? Well, that's kind of the, that's kind of the logic of a 10-year-old who says, well, I'm going to go buy a hot Camaro, so I'm now, I'm going to be Don Garlets, Mario Andretti. Let's buy a set of golf clubs, I'm going to be Tiger Woods. Or the same logic is that spoons make people fat. Do any of us believe that? No, it's stupid, it's silly. But that's the logic, that trying to prevent the Glendale Gun Show and other gun shows, which a lot of people would try to ban, that's the Camaro, that's the logic they're trying to use. An object does not make you who you are. A gun doesn't make you who you are. It does not force you to do anything that you would not normally already do. Our laws must be based on reason and logic.
Thank you. Lou Fried, followed by Michael Collins, followed by Steve Freeson.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody this evening. I enjoy the gun show. Let me tell you real quick, back on a military 35 years.
Give us your name for the record, quickly.
My name?
For the record.
Oh, okay. Dr. Louis Fried. I have 35 years in law enforcement, is an LT. My daddy had three stars on his collar. My daughter is now maritime law enforcement with the Coast Guard, yay. Anyway, I enjoy the gun show. They have other things besides guns there. They have wallets and all kinds of good stuff. I don't feel you should stop it at all. And if you get into facts and statistics going a little bit further about weapons and such like that, states that have even easy access CCWs, that's a concealed weapons permit, have a lower crime rate, because the bad guys don't know who's packing, okay? So that's my feelings on it. I'm very strong Second Amendment. I fought for this country, my dad, my daughter. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. I'm under time, too.
Michael Collins, Steve Freeson, and then followed by Paul Payne and Sean Brady.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for this time to hear us out on this. My name is Mike Collins. I am a resident of Glendale. I'm a certified NRA instructor, and I'm also a self-defense instructor for Civilian Arms Training Source, who is also a vendor at the Glendale Gun Show. We teach a system that is, has proven to save lives, both in law enforcement and in the community, in real-world conditions. In fact, a great, significant percentage of our student body happens to be women, who have either been victims of violent attack or are in fear of being so. A gun show is more than just selling guns to people or cheap ammo. It involves an entire community of service and law-abiding interest. We at Civilian Arms Training, for example, help those who have already chosen to protect themselves with a firearm do so in the safest, most responsible way in order to be more prepared to protect themselves. We share a proven system developed over 17 years that was designed based on statistical facts in law enforcement and body alarm response. It is, in fact, unique to this region. Closing the Glendale Gun Show will take this potentially life-saving skill source away from your constituents and my neighbors. Please don't do this. Lastly, and therefore instead, I respectfully request that you vote in favor of leaving the Glendale Gun Show alone and even expanding it in the community, perhaps another venue, a larger venue, including free metered parking on the days of any gun show event. Thank you.
Steve Freeson, Paul Payne, Sean Brady.
Good evening, council. Thank you again for this evening, let me speak this evening. My name is Steve Freeson, and as all of you know by now, I'm the promoter and operator of the Glendale Gun Show. The Glendale Gun Show is not a threat to the city of Glendale and has proven such over the past 20 years. To answer a question earlier, it was that we've been in existence since 1992. The show is highly regulated and patrolled by security and other undercover California Department of Justice agents. The Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms has had its own booth at the show to educate firearm owners and dealers. All federal, state, and local laws are complied with at the show. Purchaser must fill out the federal and state paperwork, pass a background check, and wait 10 days, then pick up a firearm from another location. It is not any different than buying a firearm at a local gun shop, as the same laws must be followed at the gun show. The gun show is a legal business, and the citizens have the constitutional right to purchase products sold at the gun show. I have a great relationship with the city of Glendale. Please keep in mind that I am running a legal business and have a contract in place through 2014. For this reason, I urge you to vote no on any action that would terminate the Glendale Gun Show. Thank you for your time this evening.
Paul Payne, followed by Sean Brady and Diane Melbar.
Mayor, Mr. Council, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is H. Paul Payne. I'm the liaison for the Executive Vice President of the National Rifle Association. I'm here representing the NRA and our thousands of members in Glendale. It seems that I'm back in Glendale. It seems I might even be back in Glendale quite a bit in the near future. I'm hearing a lot of stories, I'm hearing a lot of things from the council, I'm hearing a lot of things from the public, a lot. My phone's been ringing off the hook, I've been getting lots of emails, I've been on the internet a lot. With all due respect, Mr. Ochoa is right, it is about the use of public property, and it is a symbol. A symbol is called the First Amendment, and this is an issue, like I said last week, about, it's a solution in search of a problem. Symbolism over substance is not what we're here for, and I submit to you that it's not what you're here for either. It shouldn't be, at least. I believe I proposed last week a very, very reasonable alternative, which is the Eddie Eagle Gun Safe Program, to teach our children not to play with guns. I have yet to hear from one person on this council or from the city about that, and I offered to use my office and my association to expedite the saving of lives, and that's what that would really do. We all know that gun shows are places where firearms owners and supporters of the Second Amendment meet and discuss political activities, and that's what you're shutting down, the First Amendment. I'm going to close right now, and I'm just going to leave it to the NRA's attorney, who is your next speaker, Mr. Brady, and he'll be here to answer any questions that you guys might have throughout the evening. Thank you.
Sean Brady, Diane Melbar, and Joel Ryan.
Good evening, honorable council members. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Sean Brady. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Michelle &amp; Associates out of Long Beach. We represent, as Mr. Payne indicated, the National Rifle Association, the California Rifle Pistol Association, and Mr. Freeson, the Glendale Gun Show operator. I could go on about whether this is good or bad public policy, but I'm sure there's plenty of folks here who will go into that. I would like to address more of the legal issues with respect to what City Attorney Garcia has put forth, and there are a couple of issues here, mainly being the, a ban on the possession of ammunition and firearms would indeed implicate some matters that would be preempted under state law. Now, I know Mr. or City Attorney Garcia cited in his findings to Nordike and the Great Western Gun Show, but he should look more to the case fiscal of the San Francisco, the city and county of San Francisco. That will show you that there are indeed preempted matters here when you ban the possession of these items. The other, obviously, glaring issue is the Second Amendment. There's also First Amendment issues, legal protection issues, as Mr. Payne indicated, which we made clear in our, the letter that we submitted to you all last week. And to be clear, the constitutional infirmities, the legal infirmities with doing this are not remedied just by making it a 45-day moratorium. As a matter of fact, I submit that this is not a proper use of the statute that allows for emergency ordinances. This is not some change. The proper use of that statute, the intent of that statute, to allow for emergency ordinances is to preserve the status quo. Well, the status quo is the gun show. The status quo is possession of firearms on city property under state law. So this is a misuse of the statute, and it would trigger, I think, and warrant a TRO on behalf of Mr. Freeson and the NRA. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I will take my seat.
Diane Melbar, Joel Ryan, Tony Passarella.
Good evening, council members. My name is Diane Melbar, and I'm a concerned citizen. I oppose any gun shows on city property. I oppose gun shows across the street from Glendale Community College, and if I'm perfectly honest with you, I oppose gun shows. When I was 18 years old, a man with a gun murdered my 23-year-old brother. This has caused me a lot of trauma throughout my whole life. I even have trouble looking at guns. Unfortunately, there are a lot of families joining the trauma that I feel comes concerning guns, and I think we need to make a stand, stop gun shows.
Okay, thank you. Joel Ryan, Tony Passarella, Jeff Bregman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Joel Ryan. I'm a Glendale resident, homeowner, neighborhood watch organizer, voter, and parent of a Glendale first grader, and tonight I want to talk about symbols, too, because as we've heard, symbols are important. They are so important, in fact, that the council chambers are partly filled tonight with outside interests who will bully and who will threaten lawsuits and who will do everything in their considerable might to inflict their will on my community to protect their symbol. Because the Glendale Gun Show is not just a gun show. It is the last gun show on public property in Los Angeles County. It is the subject of one of the first major gun show battles in the United States after Sandy Hook. If those outside interests win tonight, if the March 1st gun show goes on, then get ready. They get the Fox News and CNN coverage, they get the public spectacle of impossibly long lines down Verdugo Road, they get to show the world, see? We are what's important, not you, not your community, not your community standards. We are what's important. We are, in fact, more important, because clearly guns can be legally and privately purchased in Glendale any day of the week, but we want to show you. We want to show you exactly how much we own you. You signed a contract with us 20 years ago, include all the cancellation policy you want, because you will never get out of it, never. Now, if my community wins tonight, we get something simpler and much less spectacular. We get to drive down Verdugo, no gun show signs in sight, no herds of out-of-towners roaming our neighborhoods, no nagging feeling that we had a chance to do something in the post-Newtown world and did nothing. Grocery store plastic bags, they're not evil. Cigarettes, front yard fences, adult entertainment bookstores, medical marijuana dispensaries, they're not evil either. But my community has decided they don't meet our standards. We don't want them to represent us. Tonight, to that considerable list, we can add gun shows at public facilities, at the public facility, because we decide what's right for us. We decide what's acceptable. Residents, homeowners, voters, parents. Please vote to end the gun show March 1st.
Quiet, 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 quiet. Tony Passarella, followed by Jeff Bregman.
Good evening, council. My name is.
Wait a minute. Followed by Mariano Rodas.
Good evening, council. My name is Tony Passarella. I'm a 27-year resident of the city of Glendale. Good try, Mr. Ochoa. I mean, I got to give it to you, you are really slick with the words. As a matter of fact, this is not a Glendale thing. The federal government is attempting to shut down these shows all across the nation. Wake up, America. America's in the midst of a coup d'etat, and the usurpers are hidden in plain sight. There's an all-out assault on the Second Amendment. There is a ramped-up agenda to marginalize, vilify gun owners, patriots, returning vets, and libertarians. Imagine what restrictions would be put in place as a result of the next Sandy Hook. When we, the people of America, still a free people, lose all our gun rights, we cease to be a free people. History repeats itself. Hitler took the guns, Stalin took the guns, Mao took the guns, and you know what happened next. To preserve liberty is essential, that the whole body of people always possess arms and be taught alike, especially when young, how to use them. American statesman Richard Henry Lee. Firearms are second only to the Constitution in importance. They are the people's liberty teeth. George Washington. No free man shall ever be debarred the use of firearms. Thomas Jefferson. Blaming guns for killing people is like blaming pencils for bad spelling. I am 100% against any ordinance that would ban the Glendale Gun Show. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Tony Passarella.
Jeff Bregman, Mariano Rodas, Lloyd Kassakoff.
Mr. Mayor, city councilmen, people of Glendale. My name is Jeff Bregman. I’m new to the community of Glendale. I’ve lived here just over two, three years. I’ve recently purchased a business here in Glendale. It’s called American Gun Works. It is a gun shop. What you’re talking about is not good business. You’re talking about taking money from the people, putting it into the hands of private industry, when you admit you have bills to pay. I have bills to pay. I have people to employ. I have rent to pay. I have taxes to pay, permits to buy. And to be perfectly honest, the Glendale Gun Show is my best source of advertising. It’s the most economical way for me to get the word out that I have a business in Glendale, and I want the people’s business to come to my shop. You should be thinking on the economic lines, not on idealistic lines, not on lines that basically throw everything that America’s ever stood for out the window. I don’t like it, therefore, I’m going to outlaw it. That’s not what our country is founded on. Our country is founded on individual rights, responsibilities, and perseverance to maintain those. Now, if you want to feel you have the right to ban the gun show, are you going to take the responsibility of paying for the civil suits that are going to follow out of your own pockets, so that we, the taxpayers, do not have to bear that burden? That is a burden we cannot afford, not in these economic times. That is something you have to think about. That is something you need to be thinking about. Where are you going to afford to do this? That’s all I have to say.
Mariano Rodas, followed by Lloyd Kassakoff and Bob Brennan.
Good evening, honorable city council, honorable people of Glendale. My name is Mariano Rodas. I also am an ex-member of the U.S. Coast Guard. I’m a 62-year-old man now, and I’ve trained my children in the proper use and safety of firearms since they were young. I started them at eight years of age. The Glendale Gun Show has been a very good thing for the community here. It is American as mom and apple pie. Of course, I’m concerned about the citizens who are afraid of guns, and they have a right to be that way. Yes, guns are dangerous. In improper hands, they are very dangerous. I’ve seen it firsthand. As an electrician for the city of Los Angeles, 30 years there, I’ve seen guns do bad things. And I’ve saved some people from gun violence on my own, which I could have been in deep trouble with my boss and with the city council. But I risked my neck to help people who were under the gun, as it were. Now, all I got to say is common sense should rule, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Common sense, and let fear—we are Americans. Let fear stand down. Stand up as men and women who are true Americans. And consider that God has given us the right of self-defense. The fear that one has for one’s children—I understand the gentleman who was here earlier, sitting there with the laptop with his children—I understand his fear. I had the same fear until I understood the weapon is here, between the ears. Crazy people do crazy things. They can kill with a butter knife. They can kill with their bare hands, as I’ve been trained to do. I will not take and do that to anyone, only in self-defense. I do appreciate the time you have with me, gentlemen. Thank you.
Lloyd Kassakoff, Bob Brennan, Edward Tru.
City council members, thank you very much. I’m a longtime Glendalean, attended Glendale High School, Glendale College, Roosevelt Junior High. I’ve been in Glendale for quite some time. Also, a former United States Marine. I think I’ve written to each and every one of you. A couple of the things that I wanted to call out is that the document that has passed out to us is a bit inaccurate. When you refer to the fact that in Nordike, the ruling was that banning possession was legal, it’s actually a little bit misquoted. The fact of the matter is that what Nordike found is that the county stated that the gun shows were not banned and could be held with unloaded firearms if they were properly secured with cables. The fact of the matter is that criminals really don’t care about ordinance, council members. Really, what they care about is having an ability to come into a place where people cannot defend themselves. Chief Pampa can’t really be everywhere and anywhere to protect us at any given point in time. Giving people the ability to continue to purchase firearms in a legal and safe manner is something that Americans have been able to enjoy for a long time. Mayor Quintero, Mr. Menuchy, and both of you have served in the military before. To continue to take the ability for people to purchase their own firearms is really encroaching more and more on their ability to defend themselves. Thank you very much.
Bob Brennan, Edward Tru, Paul—last name isn’t very legible—Norberg or Tampa Avenue Reseda.
Good evening. I’m Bob Brennan. I don’t want to reiterate all of the things that people have said about why the gun show is a good thing. I don’t feel there’s any relationship to crime and the gun show. What I did want to say is that I feel that the whole effort to ban the show is really about discrimination against gun owners and firearms owners. There’s certainly an effort afoot to treat all firearms owners as second-class citizens. And I realize this is on city property, but certainly if the event being held there were, let’s say, LGBT convention, or Armenian pride convention, or Hispanic celebration convention, nobody would think about doing away with it. But because it’s about firearms, it’s fair game, apparently. And so I would ask the council to not treat firearms owners as second-class citizens. Yesterday was the observance of Martin Luther King Jr.’s birthday. Certainly, he was for civil rights for African-Americans. I think it’s fair to say he was for civil rights for all people. And I would ask no less for firearms owners. Thank you.
Edward Tru, Paul Norberg, Elliot Graham.
Good evening, Your Honor, city council. My name is Edward Tru. I have a fairly simple statement to make. And for a change, it’s not going to be about guns or the gun show. It’s going to be about money. You have a cash cow that delivers three times a year, both in rent for the facilities and extra income for the businesses surrounding those facilities. That is money that the city needs. That is income that benefits the city, that benefits everyone. Let’s not turn off the cash tap. Let’s not kill the cash cow. Let us continue to make income for this city in legal, federal, and state-regulated manner. And let’s focus more on controlling things that are dangerous, things like gang violence, things like—funny thing—smoking in public. Let’s focus on those. The gun show will take care of itself, and so will the people who run it. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Norberg, followed by Elliot Graham.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Norberg. I am the owner of Calguns.net, an online community that reaches over half a million people every day here in California. We’re gun owners, enthusiasts, hunters, sportsmen, collectors. I also sit on the board of directors for the California Rifle and Pistol Association, the Calguns Foundation, and the Calgun Shooting Sports Association. I’d like to address a few points. The idea that gun shows are unregulated or are dangerous in any way is really, at best, disingenuous, at worst, a lie. If I go to a gun show to buy a gun, I fill out paperwork, I go through the same background check as everything, every day at the gun shop. I have to wait my 10 days and pick it up at the gun store. I don’t pick up the gun at the gun show. I don’t walk out of there with a gun in my hand, with ammo, you know, ready to go. It’s a fallacy. The other problem is banning gun shows has proven difficult, as I mentioned about Nordike. Nordike didn’t necessarily win. Kings County, Alameda, turned around and said, okay, we’re going to reinterpret our law, allowing gun shows—the one we wrote to ban them—and settle in that manner. Los Angeles didn’t necessarily win. They spent millions of dollars on the Pomona Gun Show and ended up settling for $1.6 million to the operators of the show. This case can be brought back up to appeals if it ever came up. The point of it is, it’s going to be expensive. It’s going to be problematic. And what are you achieving? What has happened that brought this on? Has there been crime brought on by the gun show? Has there been a rash of gun crimes, people leaving the show and violating the law? Is the purpose behind this to actually do something for public safety, or is the purpose behind this to make a statement because we feel something must be done after Sandy Hook? Something must be, but it must be something that you have to think about and not just emote.
Thank you. Elliot Graham, followed by Joel Daskel.
Thanks for conducting us here. I’m Mayor Quintero, a member of the city council. I’m Elliot Graham. I’ve been a longtime resident of Glendale, still live here. And, like, the Glendale Civic Auditorium is just walking a distance from my house. I hate to see us make the same mistake that was made in Pasadena. In Pasadena, they used to have a Pasadena Gun Show, and the city council in Pasadena shut it down. So I kind of wondered what’s going to happen next, because I don’t know of any gun shops in Pasadena. They all kind of folded up or moved out of the city. But they drove a lot of small businesses out, especially at a time when the people have a hard time finding jobs. We’re going to put people who sell guns on the unemployment line. And I call guns lifesaving tools. They used to be called equalizers, but lifesaving tools, because more often, guns are used to save lives than guns are used to harm anybody. Many crimes have been foiled or stopped because the intended victim was able to defend himself. So this is also about people having a right to protect themselves. It’s not about criminals having— and criminals can always get it, like the saying is, when guns are outlawed, all the outlaws will have guns. So we have to think about the lifesaving aspect of it. And I know I feel safer at home if I have a gun than if I didn’t have one. So I hope you reconsider this and keep the Glendale Gun Show. It shouldn’t be penalized, because they’ve run a very good gun show. They check every gun that goes in there to make sure it’s not loaded. You never see any guns being exchanged for cash. Everything is done above board. The people who sell guns are dealers, FFL licensed dealers. They follow the rules 100%. Thank you.
Joel Daskel, followed by Margaret Hammond and Donald Smith.
Thank the council for their hospitality. I’m Joel Daskel from South Pasadena. I do have friends I used to work with, and I see at reunions, and they’re from Glendale. I’m pretty sure they’ll miss the show, and I would miss this show. I’d hate to lose it. Mainly for the relics and curios, I kind of identify with those. The show is something that—I think one of two things that brings me up here to Glendale more than once a year, or at least once a year. The other thing is Swain’s heart supply sale twice a year, and that’s why I was up here Monday, came in here to find out about this. And one of the things that was mentioned that stuck in my mind was a $55,000 revenue. I’m sure you or the staff knows how much of that is tax, sales tax, and how much is rental, but I think from my experience, on other things I do around Glendale when I’m up here, you could probably double the sales tax revenue. Now, I know that—I would—again, I would miss this show, and I think my friends that live here in Glendale, they’d be a little perturbed at losing these revenues, these tax and rental revenues, to a gesture that doesn’t seem like anything else but that. Thank you for your courtesy.
Margaret Hammond, Donald Smith, Hoover Zariani.
My name is Margaret Hammond. I’m a 54-year resident of Glendale. I don’t know how many shows there have been gun shows in this city since I’ve lived here, but I’ve never been to one. It’s not one of my interests. But I do believe in upholding the Second Amendment. Good guys need guns to protect me. Look what happened to the good guys when bad guys, like Hitler and Stalin, had guns and the good guys didn’t. Genocides happened, right? They had nothing to protect themselves. They were herded into cars, railroad cars. We need to ensure our precious freedoms and our feeling of security by having our good guys take care of us. There are already regulations in place for gun sales, and I feel that they seem to be very adequate, particularly in the case of the Glendale Gun Show. I have nothing to do with these guys. This is my feeling. And I’ve never owned a gun, but I guess living in Glendale, I didn’t feel that I had the need to. We have the auto show on Bryan Boulevard. Hundreds of autos are out there on display. Should we ban that auto show just because Glendale has the worst driving reputation in America or killing pedestrians? Thank you. That’s a question to ask, isn’t it? If you’re going to ban something like this, then ban the auto shows. They are a weapon when they kill people in the street and the crosswalks. Thank you very much.
Donald Smith, Hoover Zariani, Dustin Lawrence.
Mayor Quintero and distinguished council members. I’m Donald Smith, and I sent all of you an email this weekend, so I’m going to keep it short and sweet. I would plead with you to pay attention to two very important assets of the city of Glendale. The Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand. I don’t think it’s an accident that there were two incidents in the same week as the Newtown tragedy in shopping malls. The Clackamas Town Mall in Portland, Oregon took two lives. Closer to home, Newport Fashion Island, someone fired 50 rounds into the air, and no lives were lost, by a miracle. Now, what is your job as public servants? Your principal job is to protect our security and our welfare and our assets. It is not to make it easier for gun owners to gain more weapons. So I would just ask you to do your job.
Hoover—hey, quiet. Hey, you back there? Don’t clap. Hoover Zariani, followed by Dustin Lawrence, and then Alice Ryan.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. I’m in the minority here, and unfortunately, I’m against the gun shows on city property. So I won’t repeat what’s been said, but the one thing that should be disturbing to all of us is the amount of ammunition sold at the gun shows. I don’t know what line of work all the other speakers were in, but I work on a college campus at Glendale Community College. I don’t speak for the college, but as a longtime ex-resident of the city and someone who works in this community. Every time there’s a shooting on the news, I can’t stop my mind from wondering into the realm of, when will it happen here? Every time there’s a shooting, you hear people saying, well, it doesn’t happen in this community. But me, like thousands of others who work on school campuses—and this morning, there was also a shooting in Texas—our mind wanders there. We don’t talk about it. We don’t discuss it amongst ourselves, because we don’t want it to be reality, but we think about it. I understand and respect, and no one’s saying, don’t own guns. I understand and respect, and no one's saying, don't own guns, no one's abridging anyone's Second Amendment rights. We're just asking the city not to kind of endorse the sales of guns by allowing its property to be used in the sale of these guns. Again, I respect the rights of the owners of guns, to own guns, but I hope they respect my right to live free of terror every time I see the gun show sign across from the college when I drive to work. So, thank you.
Hoover, I'm sorry. Dustin Lawrence, followed by Alice Ryan and Steve Riffle.
Hello, Councilmen and Women. My name's Dustin Lawrence. I wasn't sure what I was going to say when I came here, but after the first speaker and a couple of others decided to use my little boys effectively for their agenda, I understood what I needed to say. I'm the father of two little boys. They're more important to me than anything else in the world. And when they get up here and they try to use children to tell you that you should do a symbol, which will not make them safer, I don't appreciate that. I have taken my children to the Glendale Gun Show. It is actually the nicest venue because there's a grassy place they can play. It is also the safest place in Glendale that I can take them, probably. It is safer than taking them across the street to Glendale City College. It may not seem that way, but that's the actual truth, and that's what I care about. And, you know, I don't appreciate people who decide that they're going to speak for me, and they're going to speak for the welfare of my children. I took them there explicitly for a First Amendment purpose. I wanted them to see people behaving responsibly. Because if they only see the guys on the street corner, the kids who all they know is movies, the only example they have is people who think that guns are about action movies, guns are about getting something you want. When they go to the show, they see adults who are very serious about how things are handled. They see that I am not the only one that means that, that you won't touch it until you understand what it is and until you can show me that you actually are as safe as I am. And that's the place where I can take them. And that is a First Amendment purpose, and that is part of my training them so that they will never be on the news. Thank you very much.
Alice Ryan, Steve Riffle, Eileen Hattrick. Alice Ryan, Steve Riffle, Eileen Hattrick. Okay, take your time. Have about 32 more cards to go, for those of you that are keeping track.
Like my grandson said, I walk too slow. Okay, my name is Alice Ryan, and I was a Glendale resident for over 37 years, but I still have children that live here, and I have grandchildren, and going to Mark Kettle School and Balboa School. And I'm more concerned about them being in here and having a gun show right up here on Verdugo. I don't think it's right at all because I don't like guns, that's one thing, but it's going to be in a public place where they both own property, they're paying taxes. Why are they supporting something that they don't want? And not only that, you're probably going to need more police for protection there at the gun show, and probably for traffic too, because I imagine there's going to be an awful lot of traffic up on Verdugo. And look at just last weekend, during the gun show, there was about five people shot. There was three of them, I think, inside. I mean, you're making people scared that they have to have a gun to protect themselves. And like, if you have a gun to protect yourself, you could be walking on the streets someplace and someone could attack you. And unless you're like a police officer and you have a gun on you, maybe you can use it. Or if in your home, if someone breaks into your home, are you going to have that gun handy when they break in? This is ridiculous, saying that you need a gun for protection, and these automatic guns are terrible. And anyway, that's my piece. I just don't like guns. And more people are getting shot, and even to the woman in Connecticut, she had, what, five or six guns, you know, very bad ones? And her son got to that, and he killed her and how many other people? You know, you can lock up things, and people, if they want to get them, they'll get them. And not just crazy people use these guns. I mean, an average person, years ago, people, if they didn't like anybody, they would have a fight, you know, and use their fists. Now, if they get mad, they'll just turn around and shoot you. So that's my piece.
Okay, thank you. Steve Riffle, followed by Eileen Hattrick and Yvonne Birch Hartley.
Mayor and, excuse me, Mayor and Members of Council, thanks for this opportunity to speak. I'm a longtime Glendale resident, a property owner, and a parent, and I'm also a gun owner. As the City Manager pointed out earlier, this is not about the Second Amendment, and it's not even about safety. No one's proposing to curtail the right to own or buy a gun in Glendale, and no one is proposing or saying that the gun show is a bad neighborhood or that it's unsafe. What this is about only is the proper use of public property. This is about the kind of city that we, the voters and residents and property owners and parents, want Glendale to be. In the words of our Vice President, Newtown changed everything. Curbing gun violence in this country will be a massive and long-term national effort, but it's got to begin here with small steps right now in our communities. This is our opportunity to set the tone, to set a positive example, and it's our opportunity to lead. History is going to be made on this issue, and years from now, we'll be judged on whether we fought for what's right or cowered in the face of intimidation. No matter how this issue plays out, this city is bound to be sued. Either the NRA will sue you for ending the gun show, or activists will sue you for capitulating. So ask yourselves, whose side are you on? No one says fighting the NRA is going to be easy, but fighting for what's right never is. It's time to show leadership or be replaced. Finally, why is Glendale willing to host a gun show on public property when our neighboring cities do not? What community benefit does the gun show bring beyond revenues of about $50,000, a drop in the bucket of the $170 million general fund budget? That's a sadly small fee to sell out Glendale's reputation, its brand, to the NRA and its followers. Ask your friends who live outside our city what Glendale represents to them. Chances are, they'll say Americana, car dealerships, good schools, good kebab, and the gun show. It's time to change the latter.
Okay, Eileen Hattrick, Yvonne Birch Hartley, Carlo Hakopian.
My name is Eileen Hattrick, and I am a parent and a grandparent and an educator. I ran schools for 16 years as a principal, and I've had to deal with safety all my career. And I want to tell you right now, I know my colleagues in schools feel so unsafe, not because they don't have guns at the door to get in, but because they're hearing the news and they're reading the statistics, and they know that our children are not safe. This gentleman that just came up said just about everything that I was about to say, and it is about, a lot of this is about, what do you want Glendale to stand for? And it's starting to grow. This is starting to be a wonderful city, and I am very sad if this Council does not take a position and look at the bigger picture and look at the safety of the residents. It's not about taking guns away. We know we can get guns. I have a gun. And it's not about taking my gun or your gun away. We can get guns in so many places. But does the city want to sponsor a place to buy guns? I want to leave you with just one statistic. I heard so many statistics over the last couple of weeks because of what happened, and this one statistic resonates with me, and I can't stop thinking about it. And there is, to me, no answer other than we have too many guns in this country. And that is, this was a statistic given by Congressman Guilford. As you know, she was impaired by a gun. And the statistic is that, in our country, we represent in the world 4.5% of the population of the whole world. And yet, 85% of children killed by guns are from the United States. That's powerful. And I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for you to consider this. We know how important the revenues are from this gun show, but the higher ground is really very, very important to consider. Thank you very much.
Yvonne Birch Hartley, followed by Carlo Hakopian, and then John Hermis Meyer.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you. I am here because I read in the Glendale News Press that the pro-gun constituency was well-represented at last week's meeting. And so I just wanted to voice my support for this proposed moratorium on the gun show in Glendale. I feel that having a gun show on city property is a tacit endorsement of the gun industry, and I don't feel that's an appropriate use of our city property. Thank you.
Carlo Hakopian, John, hard to decipher the name, Hermis Meyer, and followed by Boyd Hartley.
Hi, my name is Carlo Hakopian. I neither have a attorney nor an NRA representative here, which we did earlier. As a concerned resident, I spoke at the City Council meeting last week regarding the gun show, if you remember. I'm glad that we have residents who are participating in these meetings regardless of their point of view. We are a nation of fear. Every time we turn on the news, it shows that we are living in a very terrified, frightening, dangerous place. It bombards us with news to make us scare off next-door neighbor, the coworker, the teacher, the classmate, and so on. But media rarely mentions that over 12,000 people, including children, die every year of gun violence. As President Obama stated, 900 people have died in gun violence since Newtown tragedy. Rarely if ever, they mention how easily a person planning a mass shooting can purchase ammunition at gun show until tragedy occurs. The NRA, the gun industry, our politicians are the ones who decide what we see and what we hear in the news. Unfortunately, it is only during sad tragedies such as the Newtown, Aurora, Virginia Tech, is when we realize that there needs to be restrictions on gun shows and gun purchases. Ammunitions purchased in several mass shootings were done legally from gun shows. This past weekend, five people were injured by gunshots at all three different gun shows. Three in North Carolina, one in Indiana, and one in Ohio. This morning, there's been another shooting at Texas College. What happens if it happens in our town? What will you, as Councilmember, tell the victims' families? Mayor Frank Quintero, City Council Rafi Manukian, City Member Dave Weaver, I'm asking you to no longer allow this gun show to go on and no longer allow bullets to be sold at city property.
Time's up. John Hermis Meyer, Boyd Hartley, Zanku Armenian.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is John Hermis Meyer. I've lived here since I was four. I'm 43, so that's 39 years. I am wearing a Boy Scout uniform, but I'm not representing the Boy Scouts, but it is because of the Boy Scouts I'm here. I'm a rifle instructor for my son's troop. I instruct many boys in the safe use of firearms, the responsible use, and to show them that firearm is not Call of Duty or modern warfare. It is something to be respected and to be treated responsibly. What does it have to do with the Glendale Gun Show? Not much. I don't go. I buy my ammunition online. It's not that cheap, sorry, hate to tell you. And I purchased a couple firearms from them, a black powder rifle and a 22, that I use to instruct the boys. But what it all boils down to, this whole thing, is what we want from you. We don't, the gun show doesn't produce mass murders. Buying ammunition from there does not feed the need for somebody to go shoot up a school or anything like that. It's just a place where people, firearms enthusiasts, go make purchases, and that's it. Okay? So like with the bags, we don't need you to tell us what to do. We don't need the nanny state. It's been fine since 1992. In fact, that was the year I enlisted. And I'm going to tell you right now, having been to Somalia and Rwanda, I kind of doubt the statistic that America kills more kids than any other country. Because trust me, I've seen some pretty bad things in my time in the military. So it was fine in 1992, it should be fine in 2013. Thank you.
Boyd Hartley, Zanku Armenian.
I have no one else. I'm Boyd Hartley.
Okay, your wife spoke earlier, I believe. Your wife spoke earlier, I believe. Okay.
It's Wade.
Zanku. Zanku Armenian, followed by Gordon Grumer, and then Sarah Scribner.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council and Staff, my name is Zanku Armenian, and I live in the Rossmoyn neighborhood, next to the Civic Auditorium. I'm on the Board of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association, and I'm President of the Glendale Water and Power Commission. But today, I am speaking to you as a father of a three-year-old. As I wrote in my recent opinion column in the Glendale News Press, I have been bothered each time I have to drive into my neighborhood with my child in the car seat with the neon-colored Glendale Gun Show signs screaming in my face on Mountain Street. Since this tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut, it has spurred me to act to advocate a change I have always wanted in the community. The bottom line is, the location of the gun show is not suitable. The Civic Auditorium where the gun show takes place is next to a residential neighborhood across from a church where during Sunday Mass, there is a gun market in full swing, across from our community college where thousands of students are faced with signs promoting guns, and not to mention a childcare facility in the GCC, to the north of Park and an elementary school blocks away. But I also find it highly inappropriate for our city to be participating promoting guns. The gun show needs to find a private venue that is not next to such community institutions. The issue is not about gun ownership rights or the Constitution as the NRA wants you to believe. I'm not speaking against gun ownership today. This is about the rights of a community to determine what is appropriate for their neighborhood and city. Your leadership as elected leaders is needed in making the tough decisions that demonstrate our city's value. But also, let's not play politics or duck from the core issue. This is not the time to be driven by fear of lawsuits or to be clever with rules. It's time to stand up for principles. Earlier this month, RD White Elementary was evacuated because of a bomb threat. Luckily, the situation didn't materialize, but today, there was a shooting in Lone Star College in Houston where it was real and three people were hospitalized. For a fistful of dollars and a few votes, are you willing to risk such situations becoming real here? Will you be able to answer the question, did we do enough? Please take decisive action today. Thank you.
Gordon Grumer, Sarah Scribner, and Laura Scribner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Gordon Grumer, age 68, semi-retired, disabled, and I've been a firearms licensed dealer both California and federal for 34 years. I'm also a California Department of Justice certified instructor. My primary responsibility at the Glendale Gun Show is to do the handgun safety testing, which is required by California law to purchase a handgun. It requires a written test and observation and issuing of a certificate before anybody can buy a handgun legally in California. I also wear another hat, which is doing the gun check-in. Coming in from the outside with the attendees bringing in, all guns have to be checked for safety reasons. I actually verify that the guns are empty. I do plastic tie wraps on them to make sure that they are inoperable and that when the gun does proceed on into the show, they have been checked, verified, and are safe. They are inoperable. Besides that, my third hat that I wear is I do sell guns also, under California laws and under federal laws. I will not bend at all. The Glendale Gun Show has had an outstanding reputation. There have been no shooting issues, and I've been doing that show for about 20 years. So please consider that possibility as being the right direction. Guns don't kill people. People kill people. Lunatics kill people. Thank you.
Sarah Scribner, followed by Laura Scribner, followed by Mona Montgomery.
Hello, Councilmembers. I'm a school librarian, and I'm the parent of a six-year-old who... I'm a school librarian, and I'm the parent of a six-year-old who goes to a Glendale school. I'm here because I couldn't sleep tonight unless I came to speak about the, about the city council's decision on keeping the gun show on city property. After Newtown, many parents and others have decided that the status quo cannot stand. We have to make a change. This is the kind of forum in which change is made, and people like you are going to be responsible for ushering into, into a new era. As a, as a teacher and a librarian, as a parent, I know that guns do not make schools safer. I know that guns don't make our society safer. I have worked at a school where a student was shot and killed in the classroom. No other gun by a staff, held by a staff member on that property could have saved that child's We can't continue as if nothing has happened, and many people have spoken about the revenue and how important it is to the city, but it's also important to, to speak with your conscience and to vote with your conscience. There are many Glendale parents who would be shocked and appalled to know that Glendale allows a gun show on city property. Many of those parents aren't here tonight because they are putting their children to bed. I chose not to do that tonight because I needed to come and say what's in my heart, and that is that this gun show should not take place. Please do the responsible, conscientious thing, and, and vote not to allow this gun show on city property. Thank you.
Laura Scribner, Mona Montgomery, Eli Locke.
I didn't come with any notes. I'm Laura Scribner, and I am a grandmother and a retired teacher and a resident of Glendale. I've spoken with a number of parents and neighbors, and they all agree with me that they are not happy about having a gun show in, in the civic auditorium, in, in property that belongs to the city. I wish they were all here to speak, but they do vote, and so do I. So I just want you to know that we feel very strongly about this, that, because we are, we are citizens of Glendale, and what happens in Glendale Civic Auditorium represents us. Thank you.
Mona Montgomery, Eli Locke, Joyce Brody.
Good evening, Council Members. My name is Mona Montgomery. The gun show provides instruction and weapons to law-abiding residents, especially the elderly and the handicapped. You can even get a concealed carry permit if you fulfill the state requirements, which can be learned at a gun show. It's a social event. When the handicapped and elderly start to carry concealed weapons, criminals will quickly learn not to seek them as easy targets on the street. It is not true that criminals get their guns at gun shows. According to the U.S. Department of Justice website, only 2% of guns found in the possession of criminals come from gun shows. The reason the shooters go to schools today is because they are gun-free zones. One of the speakers talked about Virginia Tech as if that was an example of proof that we should have gun control, when in fact, that was just the opposite. At the shooting in Verdugo, in Virginia Tech, a student shot 32 people and wounded 17 others before shooting himself. This was a gun-free zone, no guns allowed on the campus. He went from room to room and shot freely over a period of a couple of hours. By sharp contrast, the shooting at the Appalachian Law School, where all of the guys, the kids, the students, everyone was allowed to have a gun, and they did, and they were trained in them, had a completely opposite outcome. That shooter went into the dean's office, shot two of the administrators and one other person, and was quickly put down by two students who, unrelated to each other, ran to their cars, got their weapons, and from two different directions told the shooter to put down his weapon, which he did. Thank you.
Eli Locke, Joyce Brody, Lauren Brown.
Hi, my name's Eli Locke. I just wanted to say that I don't think we should end the Glendale Gun Show. As the city attorney said, we do have a 10-day waiting period here, and no one's walking out with a loaded weapon or anything like that. And really, I don't want to waste your time, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Joyce Brody, followed by Lauren Brown, Arak Safaralu.
Hello, I'm Joyce Brody, and I've lived since 1939 in Silver Lake and shopped in Glendale, ever since I was little with my mother. I moved away and have come back to Los Feliz, where I went to high school in 1956. No guns were there then, but times have changed. And I just want to say that Glendale was always a wonderful place for me to go, for kebabs, for shopping, for parks. And your reputation as a city is valuable to you. The $50,000 I'm sure is nice to have, but your property values, the people that know that Glendale is a nice community, a safe, a beautiful community, that's more important to you and your, and come from your property taxes, you know, if you want to talk money. But I want to talk about the right thing to do, and it's time to not have such a thing on your, on this beautiful city's property. Thank you very much.
Lauren Brown, Arak Safaralu, Herbert Milano.
My name is Lauren Brown. I've been here for about 60, oh, 50 years. I'm 65 years old, and I enjoy the gun show, and I'm opposed taking the gun show away, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Everybody else has spoken enough on it. I believe it's already done. Thank you.
Arak Safaralu, Herbert Milano, Phil Medley.
Good evening, mayors and members of the city in Glendale. My name is Arak Safaralu, and I'm a before-and-after-school headteacher in one of the schools in Glendale. I would like to oppose to having gun show in our city property, and I would like to let you know that our children's safety comes first. It should be your priority. Every day, we are at our schools in Glendale till 6 o'clock. We are opening the centers as early as 6:30 in the morning. We are all by ourselves, and we are really concerned about our children's safety, our staff's safety, our administration's safety. It should be your priority. Please stop having gun shows in Glendale. I urge you. Thank you.
Herbert Milano, Phil Medley, Deborah Dentler.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. The memory of Sandy Hook Elementary permeates the nation. It is fresh in the minds of any parent of any school-aged child, and it is a highly emotionally charged situation that prevents us from thinking rationally of the proposals that you're about to make. What is the problem that you're trying to solve? Is it about safety? Glendale had zero homicides last year, zero homicides the year before, zero homicides the year before. In fact, if you want to look at the year with the highest homicide in Glendale is 2005, caused by a deranged man who took his car, put it on the railroad tracks, and caused a major train derailment. If you were to take a look at the issue of gun ownership, you've got to take a look at Canada, an issue with over 33 million people, over 18 million guns. So what's the difference? This is a country that does not invest sufficiently in mental health. This is a city that spends about 1% of its total budget on youth. We need to change the culture as to how we address the needs of our youth, how we engage them in the afternoons, what kind of programs we give to them. But let's not take this issue that is so emotionally charged, bring it during an election, and try to address it in a rational way. This doesn't work. I think that there are many individuals within the neighborhoods surrounding the, the civic auditorium that are concerned about their quality of life issues. But let's not wrap those quality of life issues under this particular topic, because the data does not support the significant amount of fear that many parents have. I raised my kids here, in RD White, Wilson Middle School, Glendale High School. I taught my kids how to handle a gun. I don't speak as a military veteran from the Marine Corps. I speak as a parent, asking you to act reasonably, and discuss this at a separate time when you have the full community input from Rossmoyn. Thank you.
Phil Medley, followed by Deborah Dentler, Bruce Boyer.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name's Philip Medley. The first gun show I ever went to was in Glendale. It was in the early 1970s. These gun, gun shows go way back before the 1990s. I've been there as a spectator, been there as a seller of merchandise, although I don't sell guns, have. And it's, it's one of the good shows. It's always been a good show from the standpoint of the people that go there. There've never been any problems, just been a good show. The people that come there, some bring their wives, many of them bring their children. It's a good place to go. It's kind of a social event, but it's always been a good gun show. And I've been to a lot of different gun shows. Some of them weren't very good. There's a lot of, lot of speculation now. There's a lot of fear in this country bought on by Sandy Hook and the killings in the schools and so forth. Terminating this gun show is probably not going to do much to it. The point that I'd like to make, though, is this. If you look at the statistics, which everybody does, more people in America are buying guns now than have ever bought them in history. Gun sales are so high, the manufacturers can't supply them. There's something happening here. And people, the people who live in this country, are buying guns because they feel like they need them, or they feel like they want them. I don't understand it, but I think that's, that's a statistic that we ought to look at. More guns are being sold now than ever before in the history of the world, right here in America. Thank you very much.
Deborah Dentler, Bruce Boyer, Nadine Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council and the public. My name is Deborah Dentler. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I've lived in Glen Oaks Canyon since 1989. We are a household of five, all of us registered voters, and we all vote in Glendale. Many of you know me. You know that I'm an attorney. I'm married to an attorney. In fact, now we have four attorneys in our family, my son and his wife. We're hoping if we're ever grandparents, the grandchild will figure out something else to do for a living. Now, I, it's helpful to be an attorney sometimes in understanding the, the Constitution, but it's not a very complex document. Most of us in America understand the basics of the Second Amendment that has been interpreted by the U.S. Supreme Court in the Heller decision, to say that a city cannot ban the possession of guns in the home, a handgun in the home. That's what the Heller decision was limited to, and that's an important decision. And I'm in support of the Supreme Court's decision in the Heller opinion. Since Heller, however, the National Rifle Association and its backers, the gun manufacturers, have unleashed a flood of litigation against public entities and others. I've sent some of you an email concerning this. Since Heller, the federal and state courts have issued over 600 decisions and Second Amendment challenges nationwide. This onslaught of litigation shows no sign of ending soon. Is it going to end here in Glendale? No, it's not. Will Glendale be sued? Maybe, probably. Should fear of lawsuits determine our public policy and what's right for us here in our backyard? No, it should not. I'm going to take off my lawyer hat and introduce you to my family. The best way I found to do that tonight is to dig out the old Little League pins. I've got every one of my children here on my, on my chest, all of them, Glendale College attendees, beginning with my middle child, who began there at age 15 months.
Your time's up. Your time's up.
Our family wants this show out of our backyard.
Time's up.
Not in our backyard. Thank you.
Hey, listen, I'm running the meeting, not you, okay? Bruce Boyer, followed by Nadine Hayes, followed by Brian Walker.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Boyer with the Sons of Liberty, Los Angeles, burglar alarm salesman from Reseda. I brought you this flag because this was our first flag. Live free or die. Those men could fly that flag, because when the king was going to come hang them, they had rifles, because they learned to shoot. You opened this meeting with a pledge of allegiance, liberty and justice for all. And I sit here and listen to bigots that don't want to give us our First Amendment right. Oh, we can't allow them to have a gun show. Well, if you can tell us that we can't have a gun show, who's next? No photography show. Oh, and them Pet Turtles are right out, too. Those people are bigots. They don't like it, they're afraid of it, they don't want it. It is a First Amendment issue. That's what this is all about. Our liberty, our justice. That flag flies in Glendale because this is the United States of America. I fought for this country, and everyone before me, and all these veterans that have come up here. We didn't fight for bigotry, we fought for liberty. Now, there are people that are driving this agenda because they want a circus in Glendale. They want to make this a circus so the people in Glendale can pay the attorneys and make this their little three-ring circus. So I'm talking to the people in Glendale that aren't decided either way. You want to be used and manipulated to be a circus? Because that's what the anti-liberty people are all about. And the patriots are not going to sit back and let you strip it. If they want to come up and say that people are safer without guns, every one of your police officers carries a gun when they're off duty. Why? To be safe. You want women to be safe? I want women to be safe. Women and grandmothers should carry guns, too. Thank you.
Nadine, Nadine Hayes, Brian Walker, Frederick Otz, I believe it is. Frederick Otz.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I too have a flag. This is my country's flag, a country that I want to be proud of, a country that I know stands behind a very important document that many people died for, and that's the Constitution of the United States. Our founding fathers gave us the First Amendment and the Second Amendment rights for a very important reason. If you want to talk about prophets, I think that they were almost prophetic, because they knew that there might be a possibility that sometime our country might be in distress. For those activists that are fighting because of the distress in our country, you may see our country's flag flown upside down. Don't look at those activists and think how disrespectful they are, because what an upside-down flag means is distress. And our country is in distress. I just got back from Sacramento on, on Saturday. It was actually a national movement for patriots that were fighting for their Second Amendment rights. They see what's going on in our country. Unfortunately, I think that probably the majority of the Americans, and I was there three years ago, belong to the ignorance is bliss club. They think that America was the country that was the best one in the world, and now they're waking up, because we have government officials that are turning against their own people. Do you know at the gun show out in Ventura County, the they sold out of ammo the first day. Do you know why these patriots are buying up on ammo? It's not to go out and kill the children in the schools. It's to build up munitions so that if they need to, they will be able to defend their families and their homes. Do not
Brian, thank you.
Violate our Second Amendment right.
Brian Walker, Frederick Ochs, Ochs Hardt, and Bruce Boxer.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Brian Walker. I'm a resident of Glendale for 35 years. I'm married. I have three kids. My youngest, he's a 15-year-old, attends C.V. Everybody knows gun safety, respects the use of them. I don't think the gun show banning it is going to help. I don't know what agenda you're trying to do other than get votes or something like that. The gun show is held across the street. It's not held in the daycare center during lunchtime or on the playground at elementary school. It's not held in the church parking lot. It's someplace just, I mean, it's its own place. There's a big sign, Glendale Gun Show. That's it. It doesn't say buy ammo to kill people here. It just says Glendale Gun Show. Just let people do what they want to do. Okay? Thank you.
Brian Walker, Frederick Ochs, Bruce Boxer. Brian Walker. Okay, Frederick Ochs, Bruce Boxer, Ed Gamble.
It's a good try at my name. It's a tough one. I'm Dr. Frederick Ochs. I live in Los Angeles. I've attended Glendale Community College, and I shop in Glendale. And I am a patriot. And I want to address the baloney that guns do not kill people. Of course, guns kill people. People with guns kill people. Guns enable easy murder. And to the extent that this council, that this state, that this town, that this country enables those murderers, we are complicit in those murders. Thank you.
Bruce Boxer, followed by Ed Gamble. Bruce Boxer. Ed Gamble, Clarence, last name's Major, I believe, Clarence. I will start with Ed Gamble, then Clarence Majors, whatever. Vardan Bagdasarian.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ed Gamble. Tolerance is the ability of people to get along despite their differences. Fortunately, these days, there seems to be a profound shortage of people willing to exhibit tolerance towards one another. Tolerance is not a legal issue. It's not a constitutional issue. It's not a government issue. It's a humanity issue. Unfortunately, intolerance is a path well-worn. Historically, it starts with demonizing a minority and ends with abuse or worse of the minority. Sometimes that abuse is person-to-person. Sometimes it's a democratically-elected government that abuses people. These days, gun owners are being unfairly demonized for the actions of a few nut jobs. Gun owners, exactly like you, are horrified by the tragic, the recent tragedies, yet law-abiding gun owners are somehow being blamed for the tragedies. Such blame is unfair, not befitting of a city nor country built on diversity and tolerance. Glendale has a long history of tolerance, particularly given the diversity of Glendale's residents. I urge you not only to support the Glendale Gun Show, but also to reaffirm Glendale's commitment to tolerance for all law-abiding citizens, no matter their passion. End the blame game, the demonization. Make a clear statement for tolerance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a resident. My name is Clarence Major. I'm a Glendale resident for 10 years. And tonight, I wasn't really going to talk. I didn't come here to make a statement for or against this. And after listening to everyone, I kind of just started to kind of think about what this is. It is a symbol. And I think that we're kind of using this as a symbol, as a weapon. It really becomes a weapon from where we are and what our stance is. And it really has very little to do with guns and the gun show. It's about where we are inside. What is this really doing to us? I thank God for this country where we can actually stand up here and actually say what we feel and still be respected. And it's amazing, actually. I've never been to a meeting like this. And like I said, I wasn't even coming. I got an email, and I'm ahead of our neighborhood watch in our area in Glendale. And I thought, you know what? I better come and do something. I believe that people at heart are good. And we all believe in something. And I love that this is emotionally high for all of us. And I think everyone's right to have their opinion. At first, I was going to say, you know, let's get rid of this show. Let's get rid of this show. But you know what? They have the right to have this show. I don't have enough information about what guns are or gun shows are, but I think this is about us. It's about where we are. This is an opportunity for us now, since this is a symbol, is an opportunity for us to do something about us.
Okay, thank you. Vardan Bagdasarian, followed by Michael Hammernick, and then Vartan Dridurian.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vartan Bagdasarian, and I just wanted to clearly state that I'm against banning the gun show because I find it to be fruitless, entirely useless because banning the gun show is not going to disable any sort of access to guns in the city. We are going to be able to acquire guns one way or another. And on another note, the whole issues that we are experiencing, such as these mass shootings and all these violent statistics, if you look at it, most of these happen in large cities that have populations of over 250,000. And they have a lot of bad neighborhoods, ghetto areas and whatnot, poverty, and that is the real reason here, not guns. We have, if you want to look at the nation of Switzerland, all males above the age of 18 that have served in the military are, they need to, they are required by law to own a weapon. And if you take a look at it, you know, they don't have the murder rate as high as here because simply they have good access to health care, good social services and whatnot. And on the last note, I just wanted to touch, based on this, to all my fellow Armenians, I just wanted to say that if our ancestors had guns in 1915, 1.5 million of our people won't have perished. Thank you.
Michael Hammernick, followed by Vartan Dridurian and Richard Dridurian.
Good evening. I had a nice speech planned out, but based on things I've heard, I'm going to kind of wing it on notes that I've made, so it's not going to be as smooth as I'd like it to be. My name is Michael Hammernick, CEO, Hollywood Polymer Technology, Surefire Manufacturing. We manufacture ammunition, none of which is cheap quality-wise. Been exhibiting at Steve's shows for many, many years. It was very, very effective as far as expanding our business. But there's deeper issues in, there's deeper issues I want to discuss. As far as the counterargument or the arguments opposed to having the gun show, it's all largely symbolic, and that really has me disturbed. I would prefer substance as opposed to symbolism for making a decision either way. It just seems that the setting of the hearing right now is whether or not shall we have a gun show and look at all the bad things about it. The gun show's been here for 21 years. It's one of the most tight-run ships I've ever seen. I do gun shows all over the place. There's a paradigm as to how all gun shows should be. It's been here for 21 years. Steve makes a point to talk to me about the latest ammunition laws and how I have to abide. If I don't abide or something, I'm out of there. So he definitely runs this tight ship. He's done nothing wrong in everything that he's done. On the symbolism, I haven't really heard any valid counterarguments to all the violence and everything versus gun show. I haven't seen the connection in that. Now, those who have lost loved ones because of gun violence, it does happen. That is nothing symbolic. That is all too real. But I guarantee you, most of the time is from a bad guy having a gun. And that's really what the Second Amendment and what gun shows and the proliferation of firearms and ammunition is all about. The existing gun show paradigm in other states that I do gun shows, that there's open carry all over the place, there's guns all over the place, and I have never felt safer. For those who just do not feel safe being in Glendale because of the existence of the gun show, you are surrounded by firearms right now as we speak. Look at any officer. It is open. And there's really nothing to worry about, and we need to keep the gun show going.
Thank you. Vartan Dridurian, followed by Richard Dridurian.
Good evening, members of the council, mayor. Name's Vartan Dridurian. Been in Glendale for 24 years, born here. And my main concern tonight is how the council thinks they have the authority to trample on the Constitution and impose their will on the people that they're supposed to represent. The people are here tonight to voice their support for the Glendale Gun Show, and yet you temporary politicians find it necessary to pursue your own agenda and act against the will of the people. There was talk tonight about if we should be proud as a city to sponsor a gun show. I have a question. Should we be proud that there's a gentleman's club on San Fernando? It's a question of priorities. Should we be proud of that or should we be proud
The city of Los Angeles for the folks in the audience.
It's close enough to Glendale. Should we be proud of that or should we be proud that this city supports the Second Amendment? My message is simple. Stop subverting our ability to defend ourselves from criminals and, more importantly, from an ever-growing tyrannical government. Thank you.
Richard Dridurian, Richard Dridurian, followed by Leslie Koch.
Council members, my name's, excuse me, my name's Richard Dridurian, and I appreciate the time you have given us to speak. I think the only difference between myself and those in the audience and you on the podium is that you people have won an election. My response, so what? It doesn't make you smarter. If anything, it may even be a forum for personal silliness to be exhibited on public display. The Glendale Gun Show is number one. It is across from Glendale College, but Glendale College is not even in session when the gun show is up and running. For those people in the audience that have expressed some concern that the gun show is near their homes, well, my response to that is, you've bought a home near a commercial facility. You should expect to have various venues taking place there, some of which you may like, others that you may not like. I think there's a doll show going on once or twice a year. My God, I remember a few years ago that there was a movie with a scary doll. Should we get rid of the doll show also? And I haven't seen one person that attended the gun show that all of a sudden has a picnic in the park and they're displaying bullets or anything like that. So I think the fear of gun shows is really the fear of guns. If you don't like a gun, don't go to the gun show. Don't buy one. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have three more. Hey, quiet, quiet. I have three more cards. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Turn in your, fill out a card quickly and turn it in to the clerk.
The cards are available at the table in the rear of the
And we're getting ready to wrap it up in terms of speakers. Okay, Leslie Koch, Curtis Stanley, Bahay Garavandian.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Koch. At the time of the Constitution, the right to bear arms was the right to bear a musket, not the type of weapons that killed dozens of people at a time. Columbine, Sandy Hook Elementary School, how many wake-up calls do we need? Here's a quote from the Daniel Mazur Memorial website. "The U.S. has over 30,000 gun deaths every year. That's 10 times the amount of the world's other industrialized countries combined. An average of 10 young people are killed by guns each and every day, almost a Columbine every day. Gun shows are not an appropriate use of public property. I respectfully ask you to stop the gun shows on Glendale property." Thank you.
Curtis Stanley, Bahay Garavandian. Okay, so these will be the last, these will be the last cards that I'll be taking tonight.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I am Curtis Stanley. I'm a lifelong resident of this city. We raised our children here. We have one serving in the military still, and he is very active with weapons. I'm in support of the gun show. My wife is also. The reason for it is a number of things which have already been spoken about. The city can use the cash, but that is a small issue. The problem is, as I understand it, it's across the street from a school. Well, number one is, it's across the street from a college. To get across there, you've got to do quite a bit to get across that busy street. Number two is, has already been brought out that the gun show is on a Saturday and a Sunday normally, and it's not during school years or during school days. So that shouldn't be an issue. This is infringement on, I think, the Second Amendment rights as well as the First Amendment because you're telling people they cannot have a business here in Glendale. Glendale already has a reputation with a building department business, as for decades. It's a, you would think you'd want to clean it up a little bit and make it more friendly. I'd like to share something that Benjamin Franklin said. "Those that would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." I think you need to all consider that. My concern, but, sorry, Councilman, I had expressed it earlier that you were not going to go forward that, but my concern was, of course, was first you'll have to close the gun show, then the next thing is you're going to want registration, and the next thing after that would be confiscation.
Time's up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bahay Garavandian, followed by Curtis Williams, followed by Joseph Budanian.
Hello, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Vartan Garavandian. I know it's difficult to pronounce, but thank you. Before I start, I'd like to say I am a really bad public speaker, so if I stutter or stammer, please forgive me. I sent Councilmember Monukin an email regarding the gun show in which I explained why the gun show should not be banned. I've heard a lot of arguments against the Second Amendment, saying it was intended for muskets and guns that are not, that they didn't imagine to this day. I don't think that's true. Reason being, if that were true, they would have also not written the First Amendment for such inventions such as television, internet. If the statement is true that we should ban the Second Amendment because of the newer technology, we should also ban the First Amendment because of the technology of internet and fast presses that we have. And as far as nightmares go, I personally have a nightmare, too. I have a nightmare that I go to school every day, and at school, there's people shooting, and it's the bad guys that have the guns, and I don't have one. And because I don't have one, I fall victim to a shooting like that. a shooting like that. Banning the guns would set forth a law. Criminals are outlaws, people who don't follow laws, thereby, they would not care for one ordinance against the other. It just doesn't make any sense to ban the gun show. I would also, in question of the fear, I'd like to say, I was really afraid of dogs, and I was really afraid of, well, with a closing speech, I'd like to say, if there is fear, the only thing we should fear is fear itself, not...
Okay, thank you. Curtis Williams, Joseph Budanian, Nancy Stout.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My shirt does say Farmers Insurance, but my views do not reflect the Farmers Insurance Group, and I'm not speaking as a representative of. I just came straight from work. I do, I do work in the insurance industry, and I've worked directly with some of your Glendale police officers, and I've worked with several district attorneys throughout Southern California. My issue is one of unintended consequences here. We have several issues here on, on the agenda. There is the issue of the gun show. There is also an issue of banning possession of firearms or ammunition on city property. And speaking from the position of a professional in insurance, specifically auto insurance, the unintended consequence there is, whether fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, gun owners tend to go out of their way to follow the law. That means if you enact any sort of regulation that puts any area that's city-owned as being a gun-free zone, or an area where you cannot possess any sort of firearm or ammunition, the habit then is to leave your weapon in the vehicle. And with the auto theft rates that we have here in this city and in this county, that then presents the problem of guns being not on the person for whom they are licensed, but being in cars that are then stolen, putting weapons in the hands of people that shouldn't have them. So please don't just look at this as a gun show issue, but please look at it as an issue of unintended consequences and what this means for guns getting into the hands of people that we don't want them to have them. Thank you.
Joseph Budanian, followed by Nancy Stout, and Joe Enriquez, and that's my final card. I believe a grand total of 60 speakers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nancy Stout. I'm a participant in the Glendale Gun Show. We've been going to the gun show, selling our product there for 20 years now. And I just wanted to say that there's a lot of misconceptions about what goes on at the gun show and the members of your community here that are against gun shows. They don't, they don't, they have a misconception about what, what happens, and we're so highly regulated at the show. For instance, I had to take a test, as Gordon told you, in order to prove that I knew the laws and would abide by the laws. Also, I have a carry permit, but I can't carry my gun with me unless it's in the trunk of my car. It can't even have bullets in it. I have to put the bullet somewhere else. So the misconceptions about guns are, need to be addressed, and the people that are fearful of guns need to find out more about how they can protect you. And I just want to say that I would like you to let the gun show proceed, the contract run its length of time, and thank you for your attention.
Okay, I actually have one more speaker card, the final card. Alan Kachaturian. So Joseph Budanian, Joe Enriquez, and then Alan Kachaturian.
Hello, everybody. I'm Joseph Budanian. I actually didn't come over here prepared to speak, but after listening to everybody, I felt that I needed to do so. Born Glendale, lived here my entire life. My family lives here. Immigrants from the Soviet Union. My mother, who was brought up pretty much communist, deadly afraid of firearms, definitely became Americanized, understood our Constitution, and feels otherwise now. So I understand there's a lot of different thoughts that we work here in our community, but our Constitution is not a joke. And for us to ban something just because it's getting some bad publicity definitely sends the wrong signal. It's simply not appropriate. There's been nothing wrong with this gun show. I'm not affiliated with it. I really couldn't care either way if it went on or not, but I do care about our rights. And I think for us, this city, we should uphold our rights. Thank you.
Joseph, I'm sorry, Joe Enriquez, followed by Alan Kachaturian.
Good evening. My name is Joe Enriquez. I just want to shed light on a little aspect of this whole issue is part, a portion of the people that the gun show services. This weekend, I just came from an amateur radio certification class, and most attendees, there were 75 in that class, and took the class as a result of wanting to be active in emergency services when disasters happen. And I got talking to many of them, and many of them are also in the shooting community. These are at least a portion of the people that the gun show services. These are active civilians, active in their communities, concerned about safety and emergency issues as well. These are people that are going to be active in times of need and so forth. These are lawful individuals dealing with lawful, legitimate businesses, dealing in legitimate commerce in these gun shows. Please don't demonize them. Please don't assume that they're ticking time bombs, that they're about to do something wrong. Legitimate freedoms to do legitimate commerce, that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers, staff, neighbors, crew. I was here last week. My name is Alan Kachaturian. I was here last week, and I did firmly oppose any ordinances that would ban the gun show from the city property. I had a speech written, but based on everything that I've heard tonight, I'm just going to wing it. I've heard a lot of talk about symbolism and endorsement. Symbolism and endorsement. What is it that we're endorsing, and what are we symbolizing? If everything that the city did or allowed to happen on its city properties was considered endorsement, I should have taken offense to Councilwoman Friedman earlier, saying that 9021FO is a great place to go. Is that where the city stands, or was that a personal opinion? It's fine. People are allowed to say what they want to say, and it's not about banning the gun shows. It's not about allowing the gun shows. It's about people being free to choose what they want. For 21 years, the gun show has been in Glendale. Has the jewel city ever been symbolized as a gun city? I don't think this topic has ever came before. I know in 2006, when Councilmember Monukin was mayor, he tried to ban the gun show outright from Glendale, and he failed. It didn't pass. And now he's trying it again. And it's unfair. It's not about owning guns. It's not about not owning guns. It's about, if anything this is symbolizing, it's that the city stands for freedom of, or symbolism of freedom and liberty. Also, across the street from a school, the ATF is inside the building. A federal agency is inside the gun show, and there is a police department in Glendale Community College. The school is safe. Thank you.
All right, that's our final card. I asked the council members whether they wanted to take a quick break before we started deliberations. They said they didn't, so we can move on to whatever comments and motions we have tonight. Mr. Monukin.
Question. There was a mention of the College View School. Is that 1,000 feet from the civic auditorium? 300? Does that count as part of the 1,000-feet state mandate?
Or if it's within 1,000 feet, it would, but again, that wouldn't be something we would regulate. That'd be either a, that'd be a state law issue, wouldn't it? It's not our code.
But can we still rent the civic auditorium if it's within 1,000 feet from a, from a school?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have, we'd have to look at that.
Okay, I'll, if there are no questions, I'll make some comments and talk about...
Hey, listen, the next person that I see speaking out, I'm giving fair warning, legal warning, fair warning. The next person I see speaking out, et cetera, I'm going to get the officers to escort you out. We've heard from the public. Now it's up to us to make a decision. Did you have, okay. All right, so that's an unanswered question, then. College View is a Glendale Unified School District school.
Right, but we think it may be more than 1,000.
And it is for disabled children, special needs children, so.
Okay, who wants to...
Since I started this, I want to first thank you all for coming. I appreciate you coming. I respect your opinion. Thank you for attending. Thank you for expressing your opinion. Thank you for expressing your First Amendment rights. Thank you for the emails. We received a number of them, probably over 300 of them. I do appreciate it. The question is, is now the appropriate time to have this discussion in the aftermath of the Sandy Hook Newtown, Connecticut murders of 20 children? Now is the right time, in my opinion, to have this discussion, and now is the right time to be proactive. This is not a discussion about gun ownership, possession of guns. It is not a discussion of banning gun shows. It is a discussion about a gun show across the street from Glendale Community College, our community college, where our children, my child, attends school. In 2006, I asked from the then-president of Glendale Community College whether he would oppose or support banning the gun show from city properties. And his email, which I have here still, and I want to read it. "You asked me if I would support a ban on the gun shows at the civic auditorium. I told you that when you would introduce such legislation, I would support it." This is from Dr. John Davitt. "Thus, I'm indicating that you have my support. It's not so much the matter of the youth on campus because the median age here at the college is 26. I just think it's inappropriate and sends the wrong message as far as the city's concerned, as far as the city's concerned. At any rate, I want to put in writing my endorsement." There was a study done by the Journal of American College Health regarding reducing firearm-related violence on college campuses, police chiefs' perceptions and practices, which was done in 2009. A firearm, and these are the results of, of the study, a firearm incident has occurred in the past, this is 2009, remember, in the past year, on 25% of campuses and on 35% of campuses within the past five years. The majority of campuses, 57%, had a plan in place for longer than a year to deal with the active shooter on campus. Virtually all, 97%, of the campuses had a policy in place that prohibited firearm on campus. The primary barrier, 46%, to a highly visible campus plan for preventing firearm violence, was the perception that firearm violence was not a problem on their campus. I understand that this is a campus study. However, city property is a few hundred feet across the street from our campus. And the key issue on this is that the perception, the last sentence that I read, the perception that firearm violence was not a problem on our campuses is the same as it relates to the gun show across the street, or the gun sales, not necessarily the gun show. I also want to read an email from a constituent that kind of expresses my feelings as well. And this individual sent me this email on December 21st, 2012, and he says, "Thank you for beginning the discussion on banning the gun shows at the civic auditorium. I was already dreading having to drive past the auditorium when the next gun show comes to town. It would be a vivid, daily reminder of all the senseless killings, and especially the latest in Connecticut. If someone wants, needs to hunt, as my family did during the Depression, or is afraid for their safety, or they cannot live without target practice, then they can legally buy a gun at a private gun shop. There is absolutely no reason for the city to showcase gun use on city property." On January 19th, a couple of days ago, three people were wounded at gun shows in North Carolina, Indianapolis, Indiana, and Ohio. Today, three individuals were wounded in Houston Area Community College. Is it time to be proactive? Yes, it is time to be proactive. We are not discussing banning the gun show. We are not discussing your Second or First Amendment rights. We're discussing a gun show across the street from a college on city property. The operator of the gun show can go to Hilton, Glendale Hilton. They have a large enough facility for you to go there, lease it, and have your gun show. You can select any other venue in Glendale or in Pasadena. Does Pasadena allow gun shows or gun stores?
My understanding is that they do not, but I'm not certain of that.
You can go anywhere, lease the property, and still have your gun show. My belief is that not on city property and not across the street from our college, where our children go to school. Even high school children go to school. So it's not, own your guns. I'm a gun owner, gun owner too. I said this in 2006. People laughed at me, individuals that were representatives of NRA that were here. They laughed when I said that. You can still purchase your guns from the Glendale gun shops. You can still have your gun show at any venue other than city property, other than across the street from our college. That is my position. However, I do believe, since we do have a contract with the gun operator, and I'm addressing this to my colleagues, I don't think it's fair to impose on the gun show for the March show at this time. I'm sure that they have their inventories, their vendors all set up and preparing for the gun show. I know it takes much more than 30 days. And I want to remind you, you signed a contract, sir. If you want to abide by the laws, you sign the contract that says we can cancel that contract within 30 days. If you did not agree to that contract, you shouldn't have signed it, and you should have crossed it off. But at this time, I'm willing to allow the March gun show to proceed at this time because financially, it's not proper for us to ban it. Like I said, they have their vendors set up, and it takes much more than a month to prepare for any kind of show, not just a gun show. However, I do believe that it's time that we introduce an ordinance that bans firearm sales, not possession, but sales from city property. And at the proper time, I would like to, if there are three votes on this dice, I would like to request that our city attorney prepares such a, such an ordinance, and after that, we can deal with the contract that deals with future gun shows. So that was, that, those are my comments.
For the council members, that would be alternative three?
No, it's not urgency ordinance.
Right, it's just a motion directing us to prepare the ordinance.
All right.
Since you, since you bring up fairness and the March 2nd gun show, I think there was a speaker here last week who asked us, by show of hands, how many of us have actually attended the gun show. And I don't think we had five hands go up. So I think in the, in effort... gun show. And I don't think we had five hands go up. So I think in the, in efforts of fairness, that we table this ordinance, this issue, until all of us have a chance to visit the gun show on March 2 and see exactly what's going on in there.
Quiet. Quiet.
So that's a motion.
I've been to the gun show twice, by the way. Thought I'd throw that out.
Well, that's a motion, that there seems to be some discrepancy as to what goes on in the gun show. I've been in there several times. And before we can act on banning a gun show, this gun show, I think we owe it, out of fairness, to everyone in the community to see what goes on there. That's a motion. I move that we table this motion until after the gun show.
We'll take motions after everyone.
Well, no, that's a motion. Is there a second? Dies, it dies.
Can I make some more comments?
Can we all speak first?
Looks like... Well, does someone want to second it? I don't hear a second, so that'll die.
Dies.
Mr. Manukian, and then Mr. Weaver.
If Mr. Weaver wants to speak before.
Mr. Friedman, I want to go last, before you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
This is a discussion. Yes, I do have one more item that I do want to talk about, and that is our elected federal and state officials. I want to call on our elected officials, federal and state, specifically Congressman Adam Schiff, Senators Feinstein and Boxer, Assemblymember Mike Gatto, and State Senator Carol Lou to work with a discussion nationwide that we're having regarding guns and the killings in Connecticut. I would like to ask them to work and introduce legislation that extends the gun-free zones, gun-free school zones to community colleges.
I have a question for our police chief, if he's willing to come up and face the crowd. Thank you, Chief.
My pleasure.
I really hate to put you on the spot. I truly do. And you don't even have to answer this, but I am going to, I feel that I need to ask you, as our beloved Chief of Police, do you feel that gun shows pose any sort of problem for law enforcement?
Well, and Councilmember Friedman, Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me, that is a very broad question. And certainly, we've seen issues in other parts of the country. But California is a very different place in terms of not only our gun control laws, but how gun shows are administered in the state of California, and specifically in Glendale. And so I have to be factual and tell you that historically, we have not drawn a correlation between violent crime or crime committed utilizing a firearm that can be traced to the gun show. That correlation simply does not exist. Secondarily, incidents that have actually occurred on the gun show premise while it's operating have been very few and far between and very minor in nature. So we've experienced some minor thefts, for example, that have occurred at the gun show. So for Glendale specifically, as the city manager alluded to, this isn't an issue, I believe, as your police chief, that's going to affect public safety in Glendale. It's simply not. Our crimes in Glendale where guns were used to, in the commission of that crime, are very limited. We average about 70 such crimes annually. And again, in those incidents, we have not found any correlation to the gun show. And in fact, it's more an issue of a product of society, and that is that we have a tremendous amount of firearms available in any community. You look at nationwide, and there's over 200 million firearms in this country. So the access to firearms will be an ever-present challenge long into the future, regardless of what gun control measures are taken. But it is an important dialogue to have concerning public policy. And I do believe that this forum is very, very important for two important reasons. And I'm speaking again from your police chief's opinion, not a personal opinion. But the issue of the symbolic message that is sent related to gun sales and ammo sales on city property is important, especially in light of the violent incidents that we've experienced over recent years. It's an important message. It's an important consideration. But it's not a Second Amendment consideration. It's not even a gun show, per se. It's an issue of the symbolic nature of allowing a sales on city property specifically. And that's one consideration. A second consideration that I think is important hearing and listening to is, you know, we are responsible for responding to real crime and real issues of fear and threat. But we're also responsible for dealing with the perception of safety and the fear of crime. And those are important elements when we look at the quality of life that we enjoy in Glendale. It's part of the equation. And I think that's why it's so important that you hear from your constituents, that you do that balancing test as to what impact allowing the sale of guns and ammo on city property has to that public fear and that public perception, because that has to be part of the equation. And again, it's not, it's not an issue of infringing on Second Amendment rights. It's purely a public policy issue that is absolutely your domain. And so I think, as some of the speakers have mentioned, the ability to have this forum, to have this dialogue, to explore the issue, is critically important. But I think it needs to go a lot further. I think you've heard from 60 residents and stakeholders today, but this is a much grander city than 60 individuals. And so I think more fact-finding needs to be done. I think this issue needs to be carefully weighed in terms of a public policy determination. And so as your chief, that's what I would recommend and support.
Thank you. So I also, thank you, Chief. I also appreciate everybody coming out to speak. It is an important issue for us to have. I think that this is a discussion that we're going to see happening across the country in many communities, you know, not just here. I agree with the chief that it is not, in my mind, a Second Amendment issue or even a First Amendment issue. I don't think anybody here who spoke really believes that they can't buy guns, if this, in Glendale even, if this gun show didn't happen. We have several gun shops. Every pawn shop in Glendale, I believe, sells guns, or at least many of them do. I've seen guns at the gun shop that's probably 20 feet away from City Hall, right across the street. Big Five sells guns. Guns can be ordered through the mail. There's a gun show in Pomona, is it? Ontario. It's not that far away. People can still get guns. My husband grew up hunting. I've gone and shot at targets with the police. I do believe that people have a Second Amendment right to keep guns and to carry guns. But that's not the issue today. The issue is about the city of Glendale hosting a gun show. And that's a very different thing. And I think that given what's been happening in this country, that there are a lot of people who are very uncomfortable with the city basically promoting or sponsoring, whatever you want to call it, a gun show. The gun show, as Mr. Manukian said, can go to the Hilton. It can go to other locations. We're not banning gun shows. We're not stopping people from carrying guns or owning guns. But I think that there are, I know that there are a lot of people in the community that are very uncomfortable with that gun show being on city property. And the right of any particular group to rent that facility is not unlimited. I mean, think about, and I'm not saying that guns are like this, but if you think about something you find distasteful, I'm not going to mention anything because it's going to offend someone, whatever I mention, I think that you would agree that the city has a right to not allow that on its property, whatever that is. And we do. There are certain things that we haven't allowed, and there are certain events that we've had that we've told they couldn't come back again. I absolutely believe that the vast majority of gun owners are law-abiding citizens. I have friends that own guns. The people who spoke here today, the vast majority of them seem like people that I'd have over to my house or I'd go for a drink with. I don't feel that it's a discrimination issue. But I do think that the city has the right to make the decision whether or not to host any particular event on its property. So I do support the ban on having the gun show at the Civic Center, in that location down the road from Mount Oak, because I didn't realize was so close.
College Oak.
College Oak, sorry.
College View.
College View. I'm nervous. We all get nervous, too, when we speak in public. Down the road from College View, which is an elementary school, across from the community college and across from a church, I just don't think it's the right venue. I think it is making people in the city uncomfortable. I don't think it infringes on anybody's Second Amendment rights to not have that show there. They're welcome to move to a different location within Glendale. People can still buy guns in the city. So I support the city bringing back a carefully constructed, well-thought-out ordinance that can withstand whatever legal challenges it needs to withstand. And I think we should take the time to do that and make sure it's done right. Thank you.
Mr. Manukian, and then Mr. Weaver.
Before we started the discussion, I asked for someone, anyone on the council, to tell me what it is that we're trying to do with this ban of the gun show. No one was able to clarify that. So as a result, I think a lot of the comments from the public had a huge range of issues that they brought up. Second Amendment, First Amendment, tyranny of governments, the Armenian genocide, the safety of our children in our schools. Let's, you know, let's talk about the safety of our children. If what we're doing as a council is trying to protect the children in our schools... By the way, you are correct. The median age of the college is 26 years old. To call them children, other than being your offspring, I think, would be a misnomer, because there are, I've been in the college. I was on the college board for several years. The safety of the students there was not a big issue. But if what we're trying to do here is to protect our children, we've got a whole laundry list of tools that we can use. We've recently, through the last round of budget cuts, removed our school resource officers from our schools. Those were police officers, some armed, some unarmed, who were front and center in uniform, immediately able to respond to any type of threat. We cut those. If we're serious about protecting our children in our schools, then this council should immediately say, let's restore funding for at least one school resource officer in every one of our schools, and encourage private schools to hire security guards or a security guard in each one of their schools as well, if our point is to keep our children safe. If our point is to keep our children safe, we should worry about our mental health system in Glendale. And we have some mental health facilities, the Didi Hirsch Center, who goes begging for funding through the CDBG process. We have homeless individuals on our streets who are mentally disturbed, and they go begging for help. Yes, we have a lot of great groups, Ascencia, we've got our own programs that try and take care of them. But if we're serious about protecting our children, we need to take and treat these people who have mental illness, who may find a gun, who may find a car, who may find a gallon of gasoline and dump it in a Molotov cocktail style in our schools, if this is all about protecting our children from violence. And if the goal is to protect our children from violence, we should say something about the violence that we have on TV, that we have on the video games. I see the video games my kids have played. They are disgusting. They are gruesome. They are, you know, they instill violence in me, just walking through the, walking through the TV room, seeing what goes on there. If the goal is to protect our children, and if it is truly the goal, then this action, whether it passes or fails, should be followed up, and we should hear from the public as well, all the parents. Let's hear about the mental health issues. You should be supporting us for mental health. Let's hear about supporting school resource officers in our schools. You should be concerned about that. So I don't hear that, though. All I hear about is the guns, guns, guns. So in my mind, I'm sensing that it's more about gun control than it is really about keeping our students, our children, safe, because I haven't heard about mental health. I haven't heard about the games. The problem with gun control, I think it's more about control than it is about guns. What we heard from the chief is that there are very few incidents at all related to that gun show. I was going to follow up with, how does the love ride compare, chief, with the thefts that go on there? How does the, and the perhaps controlled substances that are discovered? How does the cruise night that Margaret talked about compare? Because I don't see the connection between the gun show and guns coming onto our campuses. I just don't see that. A lot of this was a stream of consciousness discussion. So I had a few streams myself that I put into a little video montage. And they're not really connected in any way, but they're things that I thought about. Let's start with the first one. These are the people that gave birth to our country. These are the citizens, the farmers, the millers, the shoemakers of the United States, they weren't the United States, and of the colonies, taking on the British Army in the background. The British Army, the king wanted to impose tyrannical rule. You guys know US history. I don't need to tell you. But these are the illegal weapons. These guns are what they're using to take on the British Army. See the next shot. And here they are. And someone said, well, we weren't, they weren't thinking about multi-magazine guns that can cause that damage. Well, in many respects, these weapons were more sophisticated than the weapons the British Army, that the redcoats had, because these were long rifles. These were long rifles that our colonists were using for hunting. The British had less effective weapons. So when it says the Second Amendment, it says that the right to bear arms shall not be infringed. They weren't talking about, you know, you can have a pea shooter when the government has an AK, an M16. These guns were more sophisticated and more effective than what the government had. Next one, please. Is there another Minuteman picture? Yeah. Okay. So there's our Minuteman. They, you know, these are the people that had their guns. They were able to liberate the colonies from British rule. And this is what I think the real item was. But enough of talking about Hitler and Castro and Pol Pot. Have we forgotten what happened in LA, in California, in LA, in 1992? Have we forgotten? Because this was a black page in our history. People have forgotten about this. The LA riots, remember? Rodney King got beat up, and the police officers got freed. This is what was going on in LA, just a few miles from Glendale. Slow down on these pictures, because I think we've forgotten this chapter of our history that was about 20 years ago, where mobs of wild residents roamed the streets, thank God, mainly in downtown and central, South Central LA. But from Glendale, I could see the fires. And it scared the hell out of me. It scared the living hell out of me because I didn't know if that mob was going to come up Kenyatta Boulevard. I understood they got as far as the Sealy Building, just to the Glendale limits. Thank God, our police force chief is acknowledging, yep, you were probably a captain back then, chief. I don't know. We set our borders. These are the business owners in South Central defending everything they had. And what are they defending it with? Couple of handguns there, with those mobs that were looting, burning, and murdering. This is what happens when the police can't control the situation. Oh, we've got the federal government. Well, my brother-in-law is in the Marines, I'm sorry, in the Army. He got sent down about four days later. So this madness and mayhem went on for four days in Los Angeles, less than a mile from Glendale's border. This is the only way they could fight back. Next one, please. Cars were burned. People were burned. You've seen it. Next one, please. Next one, please. And here's a Korean business owner, and most of these Korean business owners live in our area, not too far. That's an assault rifle, if I ever saw one, and it looks like it's got a pretty big clip on it. But he needed that during those four days, because he didn't know who was coming down to loot his store, to rob him of everything that he worked for. This is why guns are necessary. Now, he's not a murderer, he's not a killer, but he needed that to protect his family. And I was never so happy to have a gun in my hand during those four days. It wasn't in my hand, it was in the desk drawer, knowing that if I needed to, at least I had a small arm to protect my family in case it was necessary. I'm not a member of the NRA. I'm not a hunter. But during those four... It lasted six days, about a week. I was never so happy. Let's go to the next one. This is what our kids are doing. If it's about protecting our kids, how do we let our kids into arcades, into games? Those are some pretty hefty weapons, and oh, it's just a game, it's just a game. But believe me, they've got someone in their crosshairs, and they're learning to shoot, and they're learning to kill, and they're learning to do whatever they can in an uncontrolled method. There's no control on these kids. They're firing away as fast as they can. Next one, please. And here's just a clip of one of the games. It's called Call to Duty. Call to Duty. Kids, this is your duty, and we're calling you to do that. That looks like a chainsaw across the guy's head, if I'm not mistaken. Your kids play these games, my kids play these games. Oh, here's another one. This is a headshot, and you get 50 points for that headshot, too. There's nothing left of that guy, but if you get shot, you come back to life in just a few moments. So if we're really serious in Glendale about protecting our children, we have to have a comprehensive effort. Because if we're not, if we stop at this gun show and say, "This is what it is," then all it is is gun control, and we don't give a damn about our kids. If we care about our kids, and there may be other aspects to this as well, many facets to this, we have to work on all these issues. But I haven't heard a good reason why the gun show, the Glendale gun show, not some other gun show, where someone drops a gun and the bullet and the gun goes off, why the Glendale gun show, in all its history in Glendale, should be closed, because it's within 1,000 feet of a school where the average age is 26 years old, that is patrolled by officers, armed officers, former lieutenants, serving as the chief of campus police from the Glendale Police Department. So this is maybe part of it, but if our job, if what we're trying to do is protect our kids, we've got a long way to go, and we should do it as a comprehensive package, and not just a gun show ban that's going to cause confusion and be misread by anyone who looks at what we did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I spent a few hours writing a nice speech to read, and after listening to 63 people speaking and my colleagues, it's in shambles. So you'll excuse me if I move around and rambling on this. As the only council member that was born and raised in Glendale, and has lived here for more than 73 years, and raised a family here, my grandkids now growing up here in Glendale, I get to wondering why this earnestly to do this now. No one in this city, in my 16 years on council, has approached me and urged me to introduce legislation, a request, that this issue be put on the agenda for discussion. No one. 16 years. Now, all of a sudden, because of Sandy Hook and others, it's urgent. We've got to move. We even have an urgency ordinance sitting here to cut right now. And I have a problem with that. We have five different ideas here. I'm going to listen to my colleagues on this. But there's some other things that haven't been mentioned. Does the public understand we have over 52 gangs in this city of ours? 52. And I bet they all have guns. And I also bet they didn't get them at the gun show. And I wonder how many of them go to Glendale schools? Say, there's 20 to a gang times 20, that's approaching hundreds of kids. Maybe they're not carrying the guns to school, but they have the guns, and if they wanted to use them in Glendale, they could, but they don't. We are one of the 10 safest cities our size in the United States of America. How can that be? All these gangs, guns all over, and we're one of the safest cities, yet because of a gun show that I didn't even know existed until Mr. Mnuchin brought it up in 2006, because I don't care about it. Now is the time to act. I know the gun shows are highly regulated, it's been said. No guns are removed from the civic. Buy one, you have to go to a licensed gun dealer, have to do a complete background check on you to get the gun. I just had a hard time believing that these are the people that are then turning around and going out and committing crimes. Except I have to skip around here. Now, the Newtown tragedy happens, and others. But we now have something new in this country called social media, the bloom of the 21st century. There's nothing in this world that happened that we don't know about with a matter of minutes. It used to take weeks and months from the news on the East Coast to West to get to the West Coast. Now, everybody is involved. Somebody mentioned about the circus. Two years ago, one person mentioned an elephant in our circus float, and PETA got a hold of it, and we got hundreds of emails and protests for cruelty to animals. Last year, we had a little circus down next to the civic auditorium. My grandchildren went to it, enjoyed it. To this day, we are still getting letters from people, emails from PETA members, telling us, "Don't do it again." Everybody in the world is weighing in on it. And now, we have the gun issue. It's a big issue nationwide. But the whole country is watching what we're doing now. There's six TV cameras here. CNN wanted to do interview, Channel 7 wanted to do an interview, gentleman over here, I don't know who, from taping the meetings. What the heck? Little old Glendale, California, used to be called the, the, no, 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 the bedroom community of Los Angeles. My father had a business in downtown LA in the 30s, built a house in Glendale, the bedroom community. Now look at us. We'll be on national TV tonight. I mean, it's hard to grasp, as an old guy, it's kind of hard to grasp all this. I will say that there are profound arguments on both sides of the gun control issue, with millions of citizens on both sides of the issue. Nobody is right, and nobody is wrong. You have your position, and you probably grew up and developed those positions, maybe from what you did, or what your parents did or didn't do. But you haven't. You're all right, you're all wrong. But what else do I want to say here? There's no reason for the violence that we see in our society today. Can it be because some of the people in America who need mental help, that is not identified till after the act? Congress is going to have to deal with that. Can it be because we have guns that have large magazines, far many bullets? Congress is going to have to act on that. We have TVs that broadcast violence, movies, videos, all of them, violence. I turn them off. I don't want to even see them. I'm wondering, what have our young children seen on TV? How are we monitoring them, day and night? You think back on the 30s, I like the good old movies. There'd be violence, you'd never see any blood, you'd never see the guy die, you just and he'd go down. There he'd be on the floor. But now, see, as much blood as possible, blood and gore. And we have been dealing with an issue here that we haven't settled on yet, about smoking. You look at the movies in the 30s, and you see virtually every star, male and female, constantly with cigarettes in their hand. And who was watching that? Kids that were getting to be teenagers in the 40s, 30s and 40s, 50s, and they grew up, and they were all smokers. My father was a chain smoker, and it killed him. So here we are now preaching violence with everything we put on the screens. So is there any one issue that we have to say, "Is the cause?" No. There's different ones. And that's going to be up to the Congress of the United States to take care of. That legislation will have to be acted on by the Congress, and I wish them luck. I was thinking the other day, as Mr. Najarian was saying, what was the frame of mind of the founders of our Constitution, the amendments to the Constitution, the Declaration of Independence? They guaranteed, as we've been told many times, the right of all citizens to bear arms. But as Mr. Mnuchin, Mr. Najarian was saying, back then, what was their frame of reference when they said bear arms? Well, to protect their families from Indians, wild animals, criminal element, even in those days. Hunt for game, to eat. Remember, there were no supermarkets back in the 1700s. And then defend their home from attacks from both foreign and domestic. That was their frame of reference, as it's been said. Could they possibly imagine what assault rifles and magazine clips, they can shoot 30, 60 rounds in a minute or something? I don't know. They didn't. So I'm puzzled when everybody says, "We have the right to bear arms." What kind of arms? Pistol in the house, fine. A rifle, single shot, fine. But assault weapons? The president said he's going to deal with that. I was in the Navy, Seabees, carried guns. I don't like guns. The NRA and the other lobbies in Washington are extremely powerful, from what I read and hear. Will legislation get through that will change anything? I don't know. I don't have a great deal of hope for it, because there's two sides, and they will never get together, because Congress of the United States cannot talk to each other, Republican versus Democrat. So here we are in a microchasm, trying to take a gun show out of the civic auditorium, which happens to be on public land, and I never realized that this was going to be such a big issue. Nobody's complained, there is nothing. So why should I say, "I don't like it"? That it should stay? Why should I say it should go? I really don't care to get involved in an issue like this, because there's no issue for me to solve. Nobody brought me something to understand, have a discussion with on, and reach a conclusion. Nobody. This just popped up. Mr. Mnuchin put it on the calendar again. He could have put it on two years when he first got elected, but he chose to do it now. I don't know why. But I'm encouraged by the discussion we've all had here today. No matter what comes up, I'll think about it, do more talking. I think we have had a very, very good, adequate discussion amongst all of us, up here and in the audience. And you're not all going to agree with what we do. You never will. Always say, "You agree with your spouse all the time?" No way, man. You're not going to agree with what we do, eventually. As for now, I was thinking, I was going to say, like, the TV series, The Shark, I'm out. That's the way I kind of feel about this issue. I don't think there's an issue to solve. Simply want to take something out of the public sector, put it out. If you think this is going to solve it, or send a message to Washington, fuck, give me a break. It isn't going to happen. They've got so many problems in Washington, they don't have time to worry about what little old Glendale, California is to say. I do appreciate you all coming tonight. I think that takes the record, Mr. Mayor, 63 speakers, something like that?
Close to it.
Oakmont, remember?
Oh, Oakmont, that went to four in the morning. Yeah, I forgot about that one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, and so many of you don't know me, I'll talk a little bit about my background. My earliest recollections, when I was a kid, I don't know, four or five maybe, going to my grandfather's house, where I was fascinated with two items in his bedroom. He had a cavalry sword. He went into the military as a young kid, and he had a revolver, a long-barrel revolver, maybe a 44. So starting with that kind of thing, later on, as I grew up, I hunted with my dad and my uncles, who were all combat veterans of the Second World War. I then went on to Vietnam, where I fired M60s. I carried and slept with an M14, a 45, shot 50 caliber when we would do convoys from the DMZ to Da Nang. So I would say I fired thousands of rounds in my life. I'm not scared of firearms, or particularly opposed to people who seem to be fascinated with them and collect guns, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, I grew up in that kind of environment. I don't have any problems with people who want to keep arms. Now, the issue tonight, and I think Ms. Friedman hit on it, it's basically, and Mr. Mnuchin, it's basically about a public venue, the civic auditorium, and whether the city of Glendale has the right to do what it sees fit, the elected officials representing the residents of Glendale have the right to do what they see fit with that venue. And I believe we do. This proposed ordinance, it's a small step for what is a national issue, and there is a lot of work to do at the national level. It means gun stores stay open, so does Big Five, et cetera, et cetera. If the operator, who seems to have been running a good show throughout the years, like I say, I've been there twice, the last time maybe was two years ago, he seems to have done a good job of running a gun show. If he chooses to go to another venue here in the city of Glendale, and there's lots of venues that he can rent, then he is free to do so. But I do think that this is a national discussion that we're going to have. A lot of the speakers tonight have wanted to tie our local action to a larger national discussion, and I think that's appropriate. But this isn't the forum. The discussion is going to take place in the Congress, and with the administrative branch, and of course, with the courts. But I do think the discussion is going to take place in the coming months and years in this country, because we have a lot of issues to discuss, including mental health and some of the things that Mr. Najarian spoke about. But I do feel that the status quo is not working. It hasn't been working for a long, long time. What the issue is, we'll see what it is. But we have got to stop killing in this country. I mean, we have tens of thousands of people being killed, and is there no end to it? I mean, we just go on? We just continue to bury our head in the sand? I don't think so. I don't think so. I think we have to do something. This is a very small step. It may have very little national consequence, but I think it's appropriate for the city of Glendale to do this. I think we have a majority on this council that's going to head in that direction. I think we have a majority on this council that's going to head in that direction. Financially, it wouldn't work to have this vendor, meaning our operator of the gun show, to have him, I don't believe March is going to work. I agree with Mr. Mnuchin. I think we have to give him the opportunity to continue with the March show. But following that show, I'm convinced we don't need to have another gun show at the Civic. That gives him plenty of time to find another. This has kind of become a regional show, since it's not allowed in LA, it's not allowed in Pasadena, how about Burbank?
And wouldn't have a facility for it?
Yeah.
They don't have a Civic Auditorium.
Right. But they have hotels and so forth. So anyway, this has become a sort of regional draw, and it's reflected in the cards, since most of the speakers for the gun show are not from the city of Glendale, see Riverside, Long Beach, the Valley, et cetera. So it is a regional draw, and I'm sure he can find a suitable location for his gun store. But ladies and gentlemen, I've personally had enough. And by the way, my favorite issue are AK-47s. This is a weapon that killed tens of thousands of Americans, probably, there probably isn't another weapon like the AK-47 that's killed that many Americans. In Vietnam, including two of my best friends one afternoon, throughout the Middle East and everywhere else where there's a guerrilla war, it's an AK-47. Yet this country allowed AK-47s to come into this country. Some of them, who I assume are refurbished, they may not even be brand new, they may have been used to kill Americans out in the field. And we're not going to control AK-47s in this country? I don't think so. I think we can do better. So that's my opinion. Do I have a motion?
What is the motion?
The motion to, well, it's to give direction to the city attorney to prepare an ordinance. When can that ordinance come back? When can you prepare that? By what time can you prepare an ordinance that deals with the issue of gun sales on public property?
But the requisite fact finding that the council has discussed here, I would imagine the end of February, beginning of March.
Okay.
That works for us.
Can we push it closer to the election, or? That's the other issue. This is a very difficult, I just want to tell everyone, this is, I mean, the fact that we have an election in April is not lost on any of us. Oftentimes, you know, we're very cognizant, there were, almost every, every one of you said, "Well, I'm a voter, I'm, I'm going to vote, I've got five people in my family." Really, we try and put that aside and try and do what we really feel is best for the city. Having it come right before the election is a very prickly subject. I don't think, I was telling my colleague today, I don't think any of us are going to walk out winners in this. I'm sure there's a group on one side or the other, regardless of how we vote, that's going to be very disappointed in our actions and take that out on us on the polls. But just as a side note, I hope you all appreciate some of the difficulties that the elected officials, what do you say, you guys are elected, that doesn't mean you're any smarter than us? It's true, we're not any smarter. We may be a little bit more dense, but.
Speak for yourself.
So again, we.
February 19th, what happened to that?
If, based on what we're hearing from council, in terms of some of the additional information that it sounds like the council is asking for, we would ask for a maximum amount of time. So if we pushed it an additional week to the 26th of February, or to March 5th, I believe, is the next meeting. But I think we want to do it right and not fast.
Will that be a draft ordinance?
Yeah, the direction would be, under AC3, to direct us to prepare an ordinance. And again, I think this, the suggestion of Mr. Ochoa is to give us the outside date of March, whatever is 5th, and then we'll, depending on the schedule.
If it's done sooner, if you're prepared sooner.
Depending on the load on the agenda, the mayor and the city manager can then discuss which one works best.
And the public would have notice as to when it's coming?
Yeah.
The public will show again and speak again.
You need a motion for that, or?
Yes.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Mnuchin?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Without saying how, how I will ultimately vote, I.
Eric Quintero?
Yes. The motion carries, thank you very much. Feel free to come back.
Don't worry, they'll be here. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I don't think I'm going to prove, but my stomach is not feeling too hot.
Would you like to take a recess while we clear?
You don't mind, I don't want to.
Take a recess while we clear the chamber?
All right. Yeah, we'll take, we're going to take a recess.
I'll wait until they get out.
All right, we're going to take a recess for five, 10 minutes, 10 minutes. All right, we're going to take a recess for five, 10 minutes, 10 minutes. We're back. All right, we are back from recess, approximately 10 to 10. We're now, well, Mr. Clerk, please tell us what's next.
Next item on the agenda is the five-minute portion of oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. The council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
My first card is Tony Passarella. Don't see him here. Herbert Mulano, followed by Nadine Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Mulano. I just want to start with the idea that this has been one of the most energizing meetings I've been attended, that I've attended in quite a long time. In 2001, we had these major issues having to do with the lowering of the flag and so forth. This was close, but this was a really intelligent discussion that you guys had today. But see, on the topic of guns and violence and crime, I want to address an idea that I presented to one of the meetings that was held by the police department about a year ago, when the issue of the early release of prisoners from California state prisons was brought forward. It was estimated that a significant number of prisoners that are being let go on an early-release program would be arriving in Glendale or going back to where they came from. I presented a particular idea that I've had for many years, since we had this discussion of rent control back in 2001. And the idea is this, that nearly 70% of the population lives in multifamily housing, either primarily rental and condominium. And if landlords do their due diligence in doing criminal records check, and if everyone, as far as landlords and managers, pursue a more stringent process of selection, the likelihood of having these prisoners coming back to Glendale becomes a lot more remote, much more difficult. Because I doubt that any prisoners will come to Glendale to buy a home. They probably would not qualify. And so it is at the rental level that we could have the greatest impact. Now, today, I am a board member of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and one of our fellow board members has been very active in conducting these type of trainings to landlords, not only on the area of the screening, but also on the overall general safety and monitoring of their units. And so if prisoners are released, but they cannot get apartments, in Glendale, you're not going to have them around, you know, burglarizing or creating additional burdens on the police department. I mentioned this idea at least twice during several meetings that were conducted by the police department, where the police chief, DePampa, was present. I discussed it very briefly on his way out today, and he's very open to the idea of us having these type of organized meetings where we can invite by geographic area landlords who can participate in this process of looking out for the safety and the restriction of the type of tenants that they currently have or that they might have. I generally run criminal records checks on my tenants, and I learned the hard way, even though I haven't had to evict anyone due to serious issues, but I did have at one point in time a tenant whose family and relatives became a problem to the Glendale Police Department. So I learned since that it really pays to do a full criminal record check and a full check of the individual's credit and safe history and so on. So I think that we have a really practical way of addressing this potential problem. I want to say, though, that if I look at the crime statistics that it appears on the city's website, that crime actually has declined steadily despite the early-release program. It means that the Glendale Police Department is doing a good effort in addressing that issue, but I think that we can do a lot more for the long haul. So I want to at least present this to you and to the general public, that it is my intention to run some of these neighborhood activities, to invite landlords to find a better way of controlling, monitoring, and selecting tenants. Thank you very much.
Nadine Hayes. See Nadine in the audience. Margaret Hammond is the final card.
Thank you, Tom.
The thing's going in charlie horses. Okay, good evening. My name is Margaret Hammond. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, and audience. Well, maybe there's some audience out there. Number one, again, I'm back to the bulky-item pickup, 818-548-3916. I think everybody in Glendale must have bought new couches or something, because we still have, we have a flood of them all over the place again. Okay, and I wish people would call. It's very sad that they can't, haven't got enough pride in their neighborhood to pick up the phone and call and have those crummy-looking couches and so forth picked up. Okay, talk about protecting our children. You have been considering watering down our great Glendale smoking ordinance. And why? Just to please a few money-making establishments. I don't know statistics, but I'm sure that smoke from tobacco kills far more victims by either active smoking or second-hand smoking than guns do, especially when you are knowingly allowing hookah smoking, where teenagers are getting hooked by the hookah smoking. And because the tobaccos are stronger, it's much more addictive. These establishments want to make the almighty buck at the cost of youthful addiction. We're always talking about worrying about all the other drugs, worrying about, hey, this is where it starts. They get hooked on something, and they go on to the next step and the next step, whether it's marijuana, heroin, or whatever. It starts, the buck starts there. And so I just want to say, don't let that go by you. Think about it when you water down our ordinance. And then the other thing is, you know, talk about having guns. I'll never forget, I never had a gun, my husband either, and when the Watts riots were happening, Glendale was protected, or we were protected from the invasion of the Watts people from coming up, because our national armory is right over here on the corner of Broadway and Louis Street. I was very grateful, thinking that here we had protection. Burbank, La Cañada, so forth. That was our say. But what the heck, having the guys, the army, whatever it is, the army or whatever, if they didn't have guns, they wouldn't be worth nothing, would they? And here we are, back to good guys needing guns to protect us. And I'm glad, I have a neighbor who has a lot of guns, too, and that's one good thing. I don't even need to worry, because I know he's got them and he'll take care of whatever, anything happening along those lines. Never had an incident like that, nothing. And so, all the years I've lived on my street in my area, and I'm close to down to Los Angeles. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you very much. It was a very interesting evening, and I thought it went very well. Thank you. You got a lot of opinions from a lot of people.
Come back again. Any comments?
I'll just compliment the mayor on running a very smooth meeting.
Good, I didn't have to use my sidearm. Okay, do I have a motion to the chairman?
I move your day.
So.